I'd like to call this meeting of the city council to order. And before we get started, I'd just like to say we really miss Mayor Dyer. You know, he had surgery on Friday. And from everything I hear, every day, he's getting a little bit better. And no one wants him back better, more than I do. So please, keep him and his family in your prayers that he comes back as quickly as possible. So we need Chaplain Sanford Marks if he would please come up and do the invocation for us.
Thank you. Loving and just Creator. On this Pearl Harbor Day, we ask for your continued blessings on those who lost their lives and the families that were forced to live without them. Bless those who stood their ground and fought for peace. You have given us many freedoms, oh God. We have the freedom to choose love over hate, peace over war, humility over arrogance, and good over evil. Now we ask for your guiding spirit as we gather today, intent on doing good works for our city. We seek to represent fairly and well those who have entrusted us with this task. May our efforts be blessed with insight, guided by understanding and wisdom, and as we seek to serve responsibly, with respect for all, may our personal faith give us strength to act honestly and well on all the matters before us today. We pray these things in your most mighty name. Amen.
The flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
Well, all present excluding the mayor and Mr. Tower, I just don't think has joined the meeting yet. I think he's still in the building.
Okay, thank you. And now we need a certification of the closed session.
So moved.
We have a vote, please?
That's open. Mr. Berluci, thank you. My vote of nine to zero. Have you certified the closed session to be in accordance with a motion to recess?
And now we need a vote on the minutes of November 16th and November 23rd of 2021.
So moved. Second.
We're doing this together. I was abstaining on the 20th.
You can just vote yes and then tell me which one you want abstaining on.
Okay.
It's fine. They're doing it together.
Oh.
My vote of eight to zero with Ms. Wooton abstaining. You have approved the minutes as submitted.
And I'm, Madam Secretary, I am abstaining on the 21st of February.
It was the last meeting, yes?
Yes, the last meeting.
Thank you.
And pardon me, after you.
And I'd like to say I'm abstaining because I was not here November 16th. I was not feeling well. I was sick.
Thank you.
And Madam Vice Mayor, I would like to note that I am abstaining from the formal session of November 16. I did attend the informal session. And I'm also abstaining from the special session on November 23rd when I was out of town on family travel.
Thank you. Fantastic.
So is this why we read the speaker policy?
No, ma'am. Not until consent agenda.
Okay, because I knew we were going to have public comments.
Yes.
That's why I thought I would check. Okay. So now we have a public comment on 31st Street Public Parting Proposal.
We have one speaker, Barbara Messner.
I would like to ask how many of y'all received my emails pertaining to this meeting? Because no one replied and I got, Mr. Berluci, yours comes back automatic that you're blocking me, which, you know, is really inappropriate. And I want to take a minute, you know, really appreciate, you know, the invocation and to honor the veterans, the Pearl Harbor ones. And since you're the interim filling in for the mayor, you know, it's a disgrace, the condition of the memorial. I went by to put flowers up. And it's, you know, in deplorable condition. Ballard's working on everything under the sun except, you know, fixing the veterans memorial. Okay, parking? Yeah, 31st Street Parking Proposal. We pay for all the parking garages. They're all for the developers. 31st Street, 25th, Dome, all of the Armada Hoffler ones. They all go to the hotel staff. You know, the hotels are supposed to pay for their own parking garages, not the citizens. So, you know, this is another outrage to even consider another parking garage. Cleared an entire square mile of woods. That's why we have flooding everywhere and sinkholes. And there's hardly any land around Mount Olive Church. You know, we're going to be honoring George Minns. So, and due process, this was only advertised one time. Supposed to be advertised twice. I know, I know. But you work for the city and it's your opinion, but it's not correct. Thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor, you may be seated, Ms. Messner.
Oh, say excuse.
You'll be seated.
Don't say you may be seated.
I believe that your time is fired and I was just going to respond.
But don't tell me to be seated. I am so tired of your arrogance.
Ms. Messner, are you speaking on the public hearing?
Pardon?
Are you speaking on the public hearing of the proposed property tax exemptions?
I can barely hear you. You whisper.
Well, I'm not whispering, but I'm sorry you couldn't hear me.
Okay.
Are you speaking on the proposed property tax exemptions?
She has signed up.
Right, I've signed up.
Might as well stay where you are and go ahead and speak.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so what number is that?
That's H.I.
H.I., Proposed Property Tax Exemptions?
H1.
H1, Proposed Property Tax Exemptions, correct? Okay. We've gone over this before and Mr. Moss was kind enough at one point to say that, you know, the city should not be exempting, you know, private nonprofits. You know, if we want to donate, you know, it's up to the individuals. There are a lot of people that are suffering. You know, they've lost jobs. And air tax dollars should not give exemptions. You give exemptions with Economic Development Authority. You give Historic Landmark. Okay, Cole Academy Preschool, Mutz with a Mission, Buddhist Meditation Monastery, Hampton Roads Veg Fest, New Light Community Outreach, Wild Baby Raccoon Rescue, Wave College Inc., Wave Leadership College, Your Wellness Inc., Discover Courage, and Junior Achievement of Greater Hampton Roads. We have $3 billion debt. You just added almost $600,000 for the bond referendum when you should have taken care of our infrastructure. So there's no way, if Mr. Moss will continue his fiscal thing that he hops in and out of, that we should be giving exemptions to private nonprofits, especially these. Okay. I'm just waiting for Ms. Barnes. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Messner.
Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
As a point of clarification, just for the viewing public and for everyone who's here this evening, I do not block constituents from emailing me. Ms. Messner, I would tell you as another reminder that you spell my name incorrectly in many of the emails that you sent to me. I do not block your emails. I never would block the email from a constituent. And since you singled me out individually, I feel compelled to share that and clarify that publicly. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mr. Jones, would you like to do the consent agenda?
Thank you. Please do.
So, no, we have one speaker on multiple items.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, we didn't, we didn't open a hearing on public hearing, did we?
She did.
She was the only speaker for public hearing?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know we could clarify that. Okay. You good, City Attorney?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, you'll read the speaker policy.
I want to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak 10 minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal portion of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by council at the time you are called. When speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call for those individuals who have signed up to speak. We have several items with only one speaker signed up. As such, the city clerk will call the speaker and identify each item they have registered on. The speaker will receive three minutes to comment on each item. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items they have signed up to address. Finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussion and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the city council wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. And the best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect.
Ms. Messner has signed up on multiple items, so I can just, if you'll come up, Ms. Messner. I can let you know which items. The only items that are pulled from the consent agenda, so you'll speak on all the other items, was J2.
Wait, wait. J2, okay.
K1.
I'm sorry, K1?
Yes.
Okay.
And K7.
And K7.
J3, that's all?
Yes.
Pardon?
I'm sorry, J3.
Yes.
So J2, J3, K1.
Wait, wait, wait. Okay, J2, okay.
J, no, J2, J3.
J2 and 3.
K1.
Mm-hmm.
And K7.
K7, not, not K3. Okay, so the first one right now will be?
J1.
J1, okay. And for the record, I use the same email that I used before when you did respond. And you could have the courtesy of speaking to me. None of y'all answered my emails. And that's why I'm a little short about how I feel about this. And I do not think, since, that this teeny little thing with small font that was in the beacon only classified, you know, Sunday, November 28th. Now, even with magnifying glass, I don't know if it's showing anywhere. You know, this is tiny font that we're paying for. Okay, so J1, amend the city code. We should have more advanced notice and discussion when you're changing city codes regarding holidays. And annual and personal leave 2-101, defining full-time employee. You know, when I looked at the website today to see if the full agenda was bookmarked, which means you can actually read it and scroll through it. It isn't bookmarked until the last minute. It was 613 pages. But you're advertising on the city's website for employees and you're paying them a lot of money. You have brand-new people at City Hall that aren't even trained yet. They're out for training this week. You're hiring people that don't know anything about the city. And, you know, if it wasn't a toxic environment for a lot of people, people would be, people used to read the classified sections. You didn't have to advertise at all. People wanted jobs here in the 70s and 80s. Are you gonna, you're pulling George Minns?
Ma'am.
Okay. All right. You know, I think it would be nice to let those people speak, but, you know, y'all decide what goes. Can you turn that off?
Are you moved on to the next item, ma'am?
Yes. Okay, four. Orders to authorize temporary encroachment into a portion of city-owned right-of-way known as Sandfiddler Road adjacent to 2445 Sandfiddler Road. Retain 12 woodpile posts deferred from November 9th and request an indefinite deferral. You know, there's so many serious deaths and, you know, going to Sandbridge, it's really unsafe. And putting all those wood piles, that's a major hazard. So it shouldn't even be considered. And you already added 300 extra spaces for all the event houses at Sandbridge. So, all right. B, property known as 352 Tuna Lane and Sand Broad Inlet and two 5-foot drainage and utility easements adjacent to Wood Duck Drive. Construct, maintain vinyl bulkhead, marginal wharf, kayak ramp, fixed dock, boat lift, and drive-on floating dock. That sounds like a commercial venture. Like I said, we should have time to discuss this before you vote. If I didn't sign up, you wouldn't even discuss it. It would just be all consent agenda. Five, authorize reduction in the purchase price and for credit to offset development costs for 11.7 acres of city property on Bonnie Road to be purchased by Olympia Development Corporation. You know, I remember when you, one of the first thing Economic Development did was buy an old hotel on Bonnie Road and they lost $5 million. And that was a big deal at the time. Y'all have moved up to, you know, losing hundreds of millions. Orders to appropriate $678,000 to Virginia Beach Volunteer Rescue Squad, Inc. Rate two interest-free loans to purchase three replacement ambulances. It's volunteer rescue. We pay for it and we pay for it again a second time. If you'd fully fund police, fire, and rescue and you didn't have private ambulances and you didn't have uncontrolled growth, you know, the volunteer rescue squad wouldn't need all the equipment that a regular EMS and police need. So interest-free loans, that's like $678,000. So I appreciate what they do. They're overworked. And every time I turn on the TV and I see a fatality or an accident, you know, I can't even imagine what it's like for police, fire, and rescue to be going to these. And we need money going to the state police. And we need to patrol the roads and keep them safe. Y'all are failing to keep our city safe. Seven, ordinance to accept and appropriate $150,000 from What Works City. 2021-22 Economic Development Operating Budget. Rate early childhood language development implantation grant. $150,000. You know, government's too big. You have your hands in everything. $150,000. We have schools that should be open, basic education. And I heard Ms. Wilson and Mr. Jones talking about meeting with two members of the school board about the budget. Okay, B, $53,000 from Virginia Department of Social Services. 2021-22 Human Services Operating Budget. Rate adult protective services program. The money isn't the problem. You failed to protect people for decades. Hampton Roads has been named the worst place in the entire state for, you know, crimes against children, for child abuse. The worst in the state. And it's, you have people coming up here begging for help and you ignore them and tell them, you know, please go sit down and don't get upset. Okay, eight, transfer $681,569 to Capital Project. That's CIP, City Project. Crime prevention through environmental design. I mean, that's kind of like having a party, you know, after 40 years of College Beach Weekend. You know, just have a party and, you know, environmental design. This, it looks like Chicago. You're painting everything. You're painting bridges, roads, streets. It's social engineering and a lot of people don't appreciate it at all. They don't appreciate it and there's schools which are meeting, coincidentally, right now at the same time, which makes it impossible for us to attend both. Eight, ordinance to transfer, I hope somebody's adding this up.
Ms. Messner, just let me let you know that's going to be requested to defer indefinitely, number eight.
Right. Okay, that's not marked on here. Thank you. Like I said, I hope somebody's adding this up. It's half a million, three-quarters of a million, shifting all around. Transfer, bold letters, $681,569 to Capital Project 100581. Wait, we've already done that one, right? Eight, no, okay. Oh, this is, it's just similar to the other one. That one's $678,000. This is $681,000. Crime prevention through environmental design. Renovation of the second precinct police substation. What's the bar down at the oceanfront that y'all bought? I mean, everything is at the oceanfront. I really appreciate your comments today, Mr. Rouse. I appreciate your common sense on a lot of things. I think you're finally realizing what's going on and I greatly appreciate it. Because we don't need to be taking care of the oceanfront when crime is everywhere else in the city. And, you know, like Atlantis, all these places, those people can't afford to move back in there. They're not, they're not taking care of them. Okay, that's it.
Well, Vice Mayor, you'll open the public hearing for planning?
Open a public hearing for planning?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. I still think we should take care of Mr. Minns, but y'all do what you want. Okay, K, planning. Murphy's of Virginia Beach.
Ma'am, number two.
Okay, that's right. One is pulled. Okay. Virginia Beach Economic Development Authority, Virginia Beach Development Authority, Frob LLC. Modification of proffers to a conditional change of zoning. Why do we even have zoning if all they have to do is come to you and, you know, take out a permit and change it? Design criteria, portion of corporate landing business park. And this one's been deferred from November 9th. Says recommendation for approval. I assume, yeah, planning. You know, driving here is a nightmare. You know, the roads are horrible. We don't need any more development. The brewery, we spent $750,000 for New Realm. No, for Green Flash, and now it's New Realm. And then you're building all around it. Half the problem, it's never even mentioned, all these accidents. You don't mention that you don't have a curfew. People can drink basically 24/7. And all of these breweries are taxpayer subsidized. They do not have a restaurant license and they can all have events. They can have events. Churches can have events. Everything's an event. And there's hardly anything family-friendly for our kids or safe places for them to play. Okay. 1537 LLC. Reduce acreage for private school. 1537 Laskin Road. I assume this is where, I think it's Friends School used to be. You know, Laskin Road is a nightmare. You know, I go all the way around. It's the worst, most unsafe, all the construction sites are unsafe. No one's paying attention. All those zigzags. And the reason it's taking so long on Laskin Road is because of the sewage underneath and you're replacing pipes. When you keep tearing down trees and keep building high-density projects, it's just more people on the road and more problems. Okay, this one's cool. Hackers LLC. Potter Properties Group. Conditional change in zoning from B Neighborhood Business District to Conditional B2 Community Business District. Rate convert an existing vacant building into an eating and drinking establishment with virtual golf simulators. Like I said, everything's commercialized. Everything's for special interest. This is Lynn Haven District. Okay. Jose Rivera, KNP Enterprises LLC. Conditional use permit, rate tattoo parlor, another tattoo parlor. 549 Newtown Road. You would think with the pandemics, different pandemics, you know, that you would, you'd curb alcohol, you'd curb tattoos, you'd have, you know, curfews, and invest in something for our children. You don't want them in school. You want them to wear a mask, but, okay. James D. White, revocable living trust, conditional use permit, short-term rental. Mr. Tower, beach, 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 407 18th Street. And conflicts of interest. Doesn't make a lot of difference when y'all pretty much can decide who runs and who doesn't. When you take money from the developers, including the PAC, the Hotel Motel PAC, I was there when... I was there when Mr. Branch, you know, recommended it. You know, that we have a PAC so we can fund everybody all the way up to the governors and make sure that they take care of tourism. Ms. Wilson and Tower are directly tied to resort developers. Wilson had, you know, she misled, I won't use the other word, since she ran for Councilor 99, having direct conflicts with Resort Strip and Town Center. I mean, her husband at the time, CPA firm, you know, worked, worked for Bruce Thompson. Our taxpayers pay for the parking garages, hotel, town center, private developers. And, let's see. And Mr. Tower, you know, he has stock. You both have stock with, with the investments that you've had all these years. You know Kaufman and Cannol's. You admitted that we've been hiring them for outside legal work for 20 years. That's a major, major conflict. And y'all, these are super majority, the large items are super majority and it should be 7-2. It was quoted by John Uern. You know, when you transfer land and anything like that to do with the land, that it's a nine, a seven, a 9-2 vote. It's not a, you know, a general, simple, simple majority. Okay? Is that it?
Yes.
Pardon?
Yes.
Let's see, wait a minute. What number was that?
I'm not really.
Like, white? No, I don't think that was it.
So nine is, the request is to defer to January the 4th. And then 10, 10 is, the applicant has requested withdrawal.
Right. Okay. Nine, Resolution to Adopt and Amend The Virginia Beach Comp Plan. From 2016, Ray Stormwater Impacts For Discretionary Land Use Applications. And you all know how I feel about the, the bond referendum. I mean, you destroy the land and then you want us to pay for it? To, you know. Okay, nine, Adopt and Amend Virginia Beach Comp Plan. That's the one I did. Nemo. Nemo Methodist Church For Certification Appropriateness. Appeal Of Historic Review Board Decision. And, I had notes on that, but I'm going to, I'm going to wait until after the other items.
They've requested withdrawal for that. That's all.
Yeah, I still had notes, but it's someone shared. Okay, so that's it.
Yes, ma'am.
You want to go first?
I want to speak about you and die. She sits down.
I'm going to say something.
If I like to go first, just.
You want to go first?
If I could.
Okay, Mr. Moss.
Well, I defend everyone to be able to come up with a dius and say what they think they believe. But I think it's important when people make statements about the integrity of my peers, that they shouldn't have to defend themselves. But the people up here file their economic disclosure statements. During my time serving here, the last 11, maybe, maybe it's 15 years, I have found people to stay true to what they file. And I just want people to know that while Rosemary Wilson and Mr. Tower and I from time to time may have differences, I don't question the integrity and their compliance with the Commonwealth rules. And they should know that the people that are representing them are honorable and they should be defended against unfounded and somewhat sometimes maybe inferred malicious attacks on their character. And so I just want to say and defend Mr. Tower and the Vice Mayor Wilson relative to their integrity on this body.
And I thank you, Mr. Moss. And I, I think it's really sad that we can have a speaker that's so insensitive to say something about someone's late spouse who was very beloved in this community, who did not work for Bruce Thompson. He spent his entire career working for Goodman Company and rose to be managing partner. And, you know, it's, anybody that's lost a loved one can understand how I feel. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Jones.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, I'd like to move for approval under the Consent Agenda. First, under Ordinances and Resolutions. Item J1, Ordinances to Amend City Code Sections. A, Section 2-83, Ray City Holidays. Section on B, Section 2-84, and 2-85, Ray Annual and Personal Leave. And 2-101, Ray Define In Full-Time Employee. Item J4, which is an ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into a portion of the city owned. A, right-of-way known as Sandfiddler Road. Adjacent to 244, 2445, Sandfiddler Road. Ray Retain 12 Wood Pileposts, deferred from November the 9th, 2021. And this is for a request for deferral. B, For B, Property Known As 352 Tuna Lane In Sandbroad Inlet. And 2, 5 feet, 5 inches drainings and utility easements adjacent to 2813. Wood Duck Drive. Ray Construct And Maintain Vinyl Bulkhead. Margin, marginal wharf, kayak ramp, fixed dock, boat lift, and drive on floating deck. Item J5, which is ordinance to authorize reduction in the purchase price and for credit to offset development costs for 11.7 acres of city property on Bonnie Road to be purchased by Olympia Development Corporation. Item J6, Ordinance To Appropriate $678,000 To Virginia Beach Volunteer Rescue Squad, Inc. For Ray Two Interest-Free Loans To Purchase Three Replacement Ambulances. Item J7, Is Ordinances To Accept And Appropriate. A, $150,000 From What Works Cities. To Fiscal Year 2021-22 Economic Development Operating Budget. Ray Early Childhood Language Development Implementation, Implementation Grant. And B, $53,080, $53,080 From Virginia Department of Social Services. To Fiscal Year 2021-22 Human Services Operating Budget. Ray Adult Protection Services Program. Item J8, For Indefinite Deferral. Ordinance To Transfer $681,569 To Capitol Project Number 100581. Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. Ray Renovation Of The Second Precinct Police Substation.
And I'd like to open a public hearing for planning.
Under Planning For Consent Is Item K2, Which Is The Virginia Beach Development Authority. Virginia Beach Development Authority And FROB LLC For A Modification Of Proffers To A Conditional Change Of Zoning. Update Design Criteria, Ray Portion Of Corporate Landing Business Park. District 7, Princess Anne, Which Was Deferred From November the 9th, 2021. Item K3, Which Is The Friends School For A Modification Of Conditions To Reduce Acreage And Expansion Of The Existing Administration Building. The Construction Of Outdoor Stages, Classrooms, And Shaded Art Patio At 1537 Laskin Road, District 6, Beach. Item K4, Is For 15, Is The Application Of 1537 LLC For A Modification Of Conditions, Ray Reduce Acreage For Private School At 1537 Laskin Roads, District Beach. Item K5, Which Is The Application Of Hackers LLC. Potter Properties Group LLC For A Conditional Change Of Zoning From B1 Neighborhood Business District To Conditional B2 Community Business District. Ray Convert An Existing Vacant Building Into An Eating And Drinking Establishment With Virtual Golf Simulators At 1532 Laskin Road In The Lynn Haven District. Item K6, Application Of Jose M. Rivera And KNP Enterprises LLC For A Conditional Use Permit. Ray Tattoo Parlor At 549 Newtown Road, Suite 109, District 2, Kempsville District. Item K8, For Indefinite Deferrals. The Application Of James D. White Revocable Living Trust For A Conditional Use Permit. Ray Short-Term Rental At 407 18th Street, Unit A, District Beach. Item K9, For A Deferral To January The 4th. Resolution To Adopt And Amend The Virginia Beach Comprehensive Plan. 2016, Ray Stormwater Impacts For Discretionary Land Applications. Item K10, It's The Application. MO United Methodist Church For Certificate Of Appropriateness. Ray Appeal A Historical Review Board Decision At 2040 Nemo Church, District 7, Princess Anne. And the clerk will please note that Mr. Moss was voting no on K5.
Okay. Voting Board is open?
Just to clarify, number 10 is for consent for withdrawal?
I'm sorry?
K10 is for consent for withdrawal?
Yes.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
Voting Board is open?
Do we have a second? Thank you. Go ahead and open the, but one second. It's not, it's open now. Mr. Berluc, you may have your vote. Thank you. By a vote of 10 to 0, noting Mr. Moss's nay vote on K5, the Consent Agenda has been approved as read by Vice, by Councilmember.
Okay, under Ordinances and Resolutions, number 2, the resolution for, to designate Burnet Road. We have speakers?
Yes, Vice Mayor, we have three speakers, two in person, one WebEx. The first speaker is Barbara Messner. And after Ms. Messner is Tammy Mullins Rice. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, we have three speakers and then one. We have four speakers total, three in person, one WebEx. It's not my day. Ms. Messner?
Sorry. Hey, I forgot to bring the picture and the poster that I made of George Mims. He's one of my heroes. And, he didn't just care about the CTAC community. He cared about the entire city and he cared about First Amendment and, or 14th Amendment, due process. He was an excellent speaker. And he's sorely missed. You can't replace people like that. But one thing that he wanted, and the other speakers are probably going to speak about it. Well, actually, not them, someone else that I spoke to. One of George's really good friends. What he wanted was a law library. And another thing he wanted, in the CTAC community, not at Newtown Road. And I think it would be great to have a law library and a museum dedicated to him. Not another storage unit, which, you know, then when the military and everybody can't afford to pay their storage, then they, they make money auctioning everything off. We don't need, you know, nothing but storage all over the city. George, you know, deserves, you know, to be recognized and, I support the family and, and what they want to do. Thank you.
The next speaker is Tammy Mullins Rice. And then after Ms. Mullins Rice will be Andrew Jackson.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. And Ms. Wilson, I appreciate you, what you said about your husband and how beloved he was. So I think you can understand how we feel about Mr. Mims and CTAC community because he was very beloved to us. Wanted to ask the council to consider deferring this resolution at this time. Because there's been a lot of misinformation floating around about the resolution. And I would like to clear up some points in regards to the CTAC community and our Civic League Board. First, we did not seek this matter of E. George Mims being recognized by the city of Virginia Beach. We are very capable of recognizing Mr. Mims. We have done so with a scholarship in his name. We also have an award that we present, a Trailblazer Award at our Image Award Event. However, the request did come to me and my Vice President, Elizabeth Mills, via Mr. Andrew Jackson. And this was in June of 2020. And this email, was an email that was forwarded from a member of the city council. And this email was asking for a way to recognize Mr. Mims and what we would like as a community. Okay? Second, regardless of how you all as a body view this issue, how it came about, who was aware, who wasn't, when an email or notice comes to the community, to anybody, a person in the community, from a member of the city council, it is representing to us on faith that is from the council. We don't have any idea what's going on in the back room, what y'all talking about. We're taking it on faith value that this is what the council is sending out to us. That's what we received. Third, please do not take our support of deferring this matter as of indication that this is something we don't want, because that is not the case. We do want, the CTAC community is very interested in this resolution moving forward. In whatever is the proper process, we want to follow the process. What we ask are two things. That two members of our community participate in the process or the committee that you form. And second, we get to choose two people. We are sick and tired of people second guessing what citizens of CTAC want. We have a monthly meeting. You can come. Mr. Tower's been there. Mr. Moss has been there. Mr. Rouse has been there on a regular basis. You are all welcome to attend. And you can ask us. You could do a survey. If we need a petition, we could do that too. We're quite capable of doing that. What we want is for you to stop discussing CTAC community Civic League business with people who live in CTAC, but they don't come back to the community to ask the question that you're asking. They're simply giving you their opinion and they do not represent us. I am the president of the Civic League, but I am not the sole entity. Everything that comes to me goes to our board and to our community leaders. I don't make any decision as an individual for CTAC. Last, I want to follow up on an email that was circulating about Mr. Mims. In particular, this, oh, am I out of time?
You are. Are those done?
I'm almost done, yes.
Please finish.
Okay, I didn't know, I thought I lied. About Mr. Mims not supporting the resolution for the Dr. Martin Luther King way. So what I want to say is, Mr. Mims may not have been liked by many of you, but he stood up for the most vulnerable in our community, and that's across the city. You may not have liked his tactics, but he was a bulldog for our community. And he was what we needed when we needed it the most. Okay? His statement on Dr. Martin Luther King's, on the resolution, wasn't opposed to the resolution itself. He was opposed to the following line. Whereas, Virginia Beach is an inclusive community that is welcoming and empowers all. That was in 2017. And yet, in 2021, Pharrell Williams has sent an open letter to this city council for the very same topic. That's what he was saying. He wasn't against it. You may not have liked him as a man, but we will not take kindly to his memory being begrudged. Okay? Finally, that was all I had to say.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rice.
Thank you.
The next, huh, yes, ma'am. The next speaker is Andrew Jackson. And then we have one speaker, WebEx.
Good evening, Andrew.
Good evening, Council. I'm, I'm.
I'm, I'm almost where she is in that there's too much chatter, 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 chatter. I think if some, if you all gonna vote on something, let the community hear what it is you're discussing. Never mind he's little, I talked to him over here and I talked to her over there, bring it to this chamber. Let us hear that discussion. Then we can weigh what it is you're doing. We can't, we can't run around and see who's whispering to who and who met with who and who likes who. I don't want to hear that. I've been here in this city long enough to, that's enough. Okay? That's enough. I'm asking for it to be deferred so that you all can get your stuff together, sit down together, if you, if you need somebody, she just gave you an invitation, you can invite somebody out of, out of the community. Maybe that'll be enough to kind of pull you all together and make a decision and stop the chatter, chatter, chatter. I'm, I'm tired of it. Thank you.
The last speaker is via WebEx, Vernon Harris Jr. Mr. Harris, if you would pause two to three seconds before beginning, your mic is unmuted.
My name is, uh, Ernest Harris Jr. I'm on the Board of CTAC Community Civic League, and I'm asking the same thing that Andrews and my President asked for. We need you to defer this resolution so that we can meet the community, so the community can meet and decide what we want, then we can let you know what we want. We were not properly notified, the community was not properly notified. And Ms. Tammy Rice, she is our President, she is our spokeswoman. Thank you. I'm not gonna waste your time, this is exactly what I would appreciate, that the Council would defer this to a later date so we can organize and get what the community found exactly what the community wants. Thank you very much.
Ms. Wooton?
Good evening. Thank you to all the speakers who spoke tonight. I have a few comments, I just want to make sure that there's clarity here, uh, going forward for, for everyone. First, let me talk about the history of this resolution. In 2019, a resolution was submitted, um, to honor Mr. Memes, and it was approved unanimously by City Council. During this time, several members of City Council agreed that something more meaningful should be done or to honor Mr. Memes in the City of Virginia Beach. Since this time, I've been working with the community to find out how they wanted to honor Mr. Memes. I also reached out to Councilmember Tower, who is the District Representative, and Councilmember Rouse, because he has ties with CTAC and grew up in CTAC, to initiate the process and engage them in the process back in 2020, in June 2020, actually. So, um, there's also some talk about a precedent. Can we do this? Are we out of line with following or designating a road in memory of someone? Well, the precedent was already set back in 2017, when the Council unanimously, uh, approved the designation of Virginia Beach Boulevard for Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. The City Attorney confirmed that this resolution that I was setting forth tonight in the dedication for Mr. Memes is in line with that precedent. So the precedent has been set, this resolution follows that precedent. In addition, there's a street that was named for Bishop Barnett Thurlgood in 2010, when the property owners and the planning director executed a change for Erie Avenue to Bishop Thurlgood Avenue, which is another example of a street being dedicated and named for someone who's beloved in the community and the community wanted to honor. And so that's another example. There are countless other streets named in our city for people, for other people. In terms of the process, the process of communicating this resolution was as follows, there was an initial email that was sent to the Body on November 7th, and then on Tuesday, November 9th, the resolution was submitted to the Body. On November 16th, I discussed the resolution with City Council during a workshop session. And during that discussion, Councilmember Tower mentioned to me that there was a concern by a respected member in the community that this resolution would not be accepted. And we had a, a brief conversation, I had a brief conversation with him about this particular person, and that they voiced the same concerns way back, uh, 2020, when this process started. And we talked about how, uh, the President of the CTAC League, President Rice, determined then that that person did not represent the majority of the CTAC community, and that their suggestions and information regarding, um, issues in the community not accepting this was not founded. And so the next course of action, action was to call Council members to give feedback and clarification, questions regarding the resolution, and I placed calls to Council on November 30th. And additionally, I entertained and responded to several emails regarding this matter. Hence, this is a process that I have adhered to regarding the resolution to communicate it to the Body. It was mentioned that, you know, there was no notification, no one knew, but this is a process that I always follow. Fast forward to a conversation and a call from Vice Mayor Wilson, I received a call from her last Monday, November 29th, and she stated that Council would not support the measure to honor Mr. Memes and that it would fail. Now, I know that Vice Mayor Wilson does not represent the entire City Councils and their wishes, so I proceeded to contact them separately and ask questions and get certain concerns and feedback. What I noticed was a few things. It seemed that the strategy for analyzing this resolution was not to see whether we could do it, but it was more so to decide how not to do it. And that really concerned me. There was additional information about, uh, and offered about how the community should honor Mr. Memes, so there were suggestions made or dictated, but it was not, um, a collaborative effort. And so I also noticed, uh, a double, a double standard here as it relates to resolutions that honor people, whether it's a building or for their achievements, there's a double standard here. In the past, I've been presented with resolutions from various members of this Body to name buildings to honor people and their achievements in the community. Not one time was I engaged in a discussion of how that individual would be honored. We did not discuss the matter, we didn't take time during workshop sessions, the resolution was just permitted for signature and it was pushed through. However, this resolution, I was, before I presented it to Council or in that process, there are all kinds of prerequisites and requirements that I was asked to do, which I don't understand. This should not, and there shouldn't be a double standard here. Finally, I just want to go over just reasons why we should support this resolution. I would like to place the focus back on the community, the CTAC community and the community leaders, who would like to honor Mr. Memes. Again, I want to submit to you that the strategy to approve this resolution should not focus on reasons why it should not be executed, but the strategy should focus on reasons why it should be approved. Here are some reasons, but not limited to this list. And whether you support it or like Mr. Memes or not, his achievements stand on their own. He fought for the disparity study. He addressed the U.S. Congress in 2013, resulting in CTAC being recorded in history. He established the CTAC College Scholarship Program in 2011 with assistance from Bishop Barnett Thurlgood of New Jerusalem Church. He established the first candidate forum held by the African-American community in Virginia Beach. He established the Mr. and Mrs. CTAC Program in 2013. He established the annual CTAC Image Award and College Scholarship Gala. He established the CTAC Living Black History Maker Gala in February 2018. He was the President of the CTAC League from 2010 to 2018. He helped establish the new CTAC Community Recreation Center in 1997. He helped establish the Black Law Students Association at Regent University. He helped establish the Human Rights Commission in 1990s. And he helped establish the Minority Business Council, renamed the CTAC Community Recreation Center. He fought to provide sewage to Mr., or excuse me, to Mount Zion AME Church in the community in the 1990s. And he also defended college students during or following the Greek Fest in 1989. So why was the December Day important? Well, in December, uh, and December 2nd would have been his birthday. Therefore, December today was the most appropriate time that was closest to his birthday. That's why this time was chosen, and that's why, um, those who were focusing on delaying did not understand the significance. However, as you've heard from the community, they would like to delay this matter because of the issues of miscommunication and the confusion. And so it's their wish, and in the interest of the community, I would like to postpone this matter indefinitely until such a time that is acceptable to the community to move forward. Therefore, my motion is to delay, uh, this matter indefinitely.
I will second the motion.
Any discussion? Can you open that chair?
Vote is open, right?
Vote's open. Mr. Tower?
Are we at discussion of the motion?
Yeah.
Uh, I, I would just like to comment one, I want to thank the people, particularly the President of Civic League from here, I, uh, who I've dealt with extensively on this, this and other matters, and thank them for their gracious hospitality to me at meetings, and I know others, other members of Council always feel welcome and, uh, invigorated when we meet with folks in CTAC. This is simply an issue of miscommunication, I don't want to make this into more than I think it is. I think Ms. Wooton's intentions are absolutely right on, she's trying to honor somebody who's well-respected in the community. The difficulty was that while, at some point, the issue was, okay, we'd like to know how the community would like to honor Mr. Memes, that, that was the message. I think the problem was in the communication, somewhere along the line, I'm not blaming him, I'm just kind of explaining what I saw happening, this is in my district, that's really why I'm taking the lead in trying to find a way to, to get something positive done out of this and make sure there aren't any further miscommunications. But I think the problem was, there, Ms. Wooton, for all her good intentions, was not designated by a resolution of Council to go forth and see, CTAC's civic leagues or, or any other group of, and tell us what you want. She undertook to do that. In the course of doing that, she didn't make clear that, you know, naming something after, doing something that we had done to honor, um, perhaps the greatest civil rights leader in America's history, some may think, well, maybe that's not what we want to do for someone else. I don't know how it happened, I wasn't there. All I know is, there certainly is some people who, who are opposed to it for that reason, and perhaps others having to do with their own view of Mr. Memes. But nonetheless, here we find ourselves are today. I don't want people to leave thinking that we can't do better. It's a communication issue, but it's one we can solve. How Council, in its wisdom, ultimately decides to deal with it is in, is up to Council. And it's, that's why we sit up here, we are the ones that make these decisions. And I think the folks in CTAC know that, I think they respect that. I don't think they're trying to impose their will against the will of Council, they're here representing the name and the spirit and the memory of someone that they have a great deal of respect for, and I respect that. But that doesn't achieve, uh, a result of Council getting the votes. We don't have the votes here tonight. I'm hoping with further discussion, we can come up with a way to honor Mr. Memes that will be, feel satisfactory to the community, to Mr. Memes' memory, to those who respect Mr. Memes, and even those who may not share all those views, but recognize how he is held in the CTAC community. I'm sorry it's gotten out of hand, and to the extent, as the District Rep, if I was too passive about letting that happen, as I said, I don't blame Ms. Wooton, I don't blame anybody other than myself, I'll take some responsibility for it. But let's move on, get, work, work, find out a proper way to, to recognize Mr. Memes that we can all, we can agree on, or at least a majority of Council can agree on, and move forward with that. And I thank all of the people that have, have expressed opinions formally, informally, who, uh, I know there's been some criticism of who talked to who about what, I don't, you know, I don't worry about that. Council people talk to people all the time. I, I, I can't stop and think, well, is this somebody, it's okay with me to talk to, if they want to talk to me, you know, I'm, I, I, I'll make the decision whether I, there's somebody, I respect their opinion or not. Sometimes I do respect their opinion, doesn't mean I agree with it, but I'll, I'll hear it, I want to hear it. So, thanks to all the folks that have had input in this, I hope that we haven't made a mess of this thing, because I think Mr. Memes deserves to be honored in a way that, that everybody recognizes is a suitable way. I realize there may be some disagreement about what that is, but I'm confident, if, if we work at it, we can find, find a way that satisfies most of the people. You're never going to please everybody all the time. Thanks.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, uh, Wilson. Before I comment, is, I think, the President of the Civic League, Sam.
Can I, I just want to, I'm sorry. I just want to respond, I appreciate all that you said, Councilwoman Tower, but it's very important to us that, um, we share how we want Mr. Memes to be honored.
Absolutely.
We, we're not looking for, um, for the Council to tell us how to honor him. I know that it has been batted around about changing, um, a name of something that was CTAC, and I can tell you that Mr. Memes was adamant that everything in our community that says CTAC remains that way. So that is not something he would want. He would not want CTAC Park to be renamed after him, or CTAC Elementary School, or the Rack Center. Anything that's in our community that has the name CTAC, we want it to remain that way, because we have a history with this city of CTAC's name being taken from us. Birdneck Road was CTAC Road, it's not anymore. The old Coast Guard Station was CTAC Coast Guard Station, before it was the Virginia Beach, the Virginia Beach Coast Guard Station. So it's very important to us in how we choose to rep, to honor him. So I just wanted to make that clear, and that was the reason why we were asking for two members of our community to be part of the process when you go into discussing how you want to do it.
That's very good feedback, thank you, Ms. Rice.
Thank you. Thank you, I just was going to, um, comment as a member who, of this Body who grew up in CTAC, I mean, as well, I don't speak for CTAC. I don't speak for CTEC. That's from Mr. President Tammy Rice to do. So if there's ever a resolution or any communication that would involve CTEC, as an at-large member who represents the entire city, first would talk to the president as well as the district, the district representative. And I think that's extremely important, being that we are going to go to a ten-district system pretty soon. It's going to be very important that we work with district reps to bring them into the fore about things we want to get done within their community. That being said, I want to thank you all for being here. I want to thank Ms. Wooton for bringing this issue to light, and so we can get better understanding of what's going on. And Councilman Tower as well, I know historically, in the past, CTEC hasn't always had a representative who have, who's continuously and consistently come to the civic league meetings, and that's something that you have done on a continuous basis. So I want to thank you for that, as well as the other at-large member, Councilman Moss, who attend these civic league meetings throughout the city. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I, in substance, agree with the sentiments that Mr. Tower has expressed here this evening. And I want to make sure that we're sensitive to the whole issue. And I don't want, frankly, I don't want to risk this thing, this resolution being turned down, because that would be a negative, that would be expressed towards Mr. Mims, and I don't want that to happen. I personally have had many conversations with Mr. Mims when he was living, and some of them we didn't, we agreed on, some of them we didn't. But he was always a gentleman to me, nonetheless. And so, so that there, we won't be put into a position of turning down a resolution honoring him, or risking that happening, in hopes that we might find some other way to show respect and honor for the gentleman. I would like to make a motion to remove this item from the agenda, so that we don't vote on it.
Is this a substitute motion?
And give the Civic League an opportunity to come forward and give us some ideas of what they might have in mind for showing respect and recognition for a gentleman who was very active in his community, very active, came here many times to express support for his community. And so I'm going to make a motion to remove the item from the agenda, because I don't want to risk it being voted down. And on the other hand, I personally don't think what has been proposed is the best way to honor this gentleman. So that's my motion.
Point of classification? I just need a point of classification. What's the motion on the floor?
It's a substitute.
The motion is to remove this item from the agenda.
This has to be a substitute motion.
Right, but what was the previous motion on the floor?
The motion was to defer.
To defer indefinitely until such as an appropriate time to the community can decide what they want to do. I'd like to respond to a couple of things, if I may.
Is there a second to that? Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Was there a second to my motion?
No.
Is there a second to her motion? I'm sorry, I'm on the turn.
I just want to say a couple of things. In terms of, just want to be clear the way this came up. This designation of Bird Neck Road for Mr. Mims was vetted through communicating with the CTEC President, who went to the community and others and talked to them to find out what they wanted to do. There were several options. They came back, and I sent you, I sent the body an email, you have the email, from the President, that states what the community and the Civic League want. They voted on it, that's what they want. We're not at the point where they're trying to figure it out. That's not where we are. They're at the point, they know what they want, they don't want to be dictated to what it is we want to do for Mr. Mims. That's not how you honor someone. You bring the community in, you talk to them, you ask them what they want. My communication to the body was a series of communication and reaching out to the President, the community, and then in response, they said, this is what we want, the designation of Bird Neck Road, through which, went through the city attorney to see if this was something that can be done, and getting approval of the process. Hence, the information regarding the President and so forth. Now, in terms of comments being made that I inserted myself into doing this, no, not at all. There's so many things on, in this community, so many areas to address and focus on, I don't have to do that. But what I did do was take the lead on an issue that was agreed upon by council to do something further to honor Mr. Mims. And I reached out to both council members, Tower, Rouse, to engage them, to see how they wanted to move forward. And so that's how it started. I didn't insert myself into anything. I just did the research, worked with the community, and then brought the information back to council. That's what I did. So I just want to be clear that that's not miscommunicated and misconstrued, because that's not true. I didn't insert myself into anything, just took the lead and did the work.
So Mr. Jones has offered a substitute motion. Is there anyone who would like to second it? Okay, so we have a motion on the table to defer this indefinitely. Is the voting board open?
Yes, yes, ma'am. By a vote of ten to zero, this resolution has been deferred indefinitely.
Thank you, Madam Plurk.
Thank you.
Okay, number three. The ordinance to authorize the city to participate in a firearm buyback program.
The first speaker is Barbara Messner. After Ms. Messner is Sandy Frazier.
This totally ties in with due process, advance notice, everything that George Mims fought for. He was denied being able to speak 10 minutes on an item, and then, you know, Sessions apologized.
No, it's not. This is on the firearms buyback.
I'm aware. I'm just making a comment, because we sat through a lot of, you know. Okay, authorize the city to participate in firearm buyback program and destroy surrendered firearms requested by council members Branch and Jones. You know, the issue isn't buying back firearms. It's preventing crime and taking the guns away from the people who shouldn't have them, the ones who are committing the crimes. It's unbelievable how many, you know, crimes are unsolved. Yeah, all, you know, there's so many preventable, preventable crimes in our city, including May 31st. And, you know, I'm told, you know, I'm no longer allowed to speak on appointments. Why can't we speak on appointments? And the gentleman who spoke, the one person on WebEx. This is, this is city government, how it operates, and what they were talking about was not being involved. And you talking about taking away WebEx, that person wouldn't have been able to call. Everybody doesn't sit through, okay, so, you know, you still haven't honored, all this time, you still haven't honored the victim families. You have appointments for, you know, like I said, this has everything to do with crime and how it's handled in our city. There's still no memorial for Ryan Keith Cox. You're talking about a street. The post office was named for him, but there's no sign like there is for Myra Obendorf. You know, all crime victims matter, and I told Mr. Dyer that I wasn't for a recall if it wasn't for malfeasance, you know, not everything that's dividing us. Thank you.
The next speaker is Sandy Frazier. After Ms. Frazier is Shanina Francis.
Hi, thank you for giving me some time. It's going to be very short. I am against a firearm payback program. I am against using my money to buy back firearms from people in general. If you want to buy back the firearms, I suggest you take it out of your own pockets, not mine. Okay? Bad people with guns should be in jail. If they've committed a crime with a gun, they shouldn't be roaming the streets in the first place. And they're going to, even if they turned in a gun to get money, they're going to turn around and get another gun. So I'll keep it really short. I'm against it. I'm against using my tax dollars to buy back firearms. Thank you.
Do you want to say something?
Yes, ma'am. Would you mind returning to the podium, please? I just, I know this summary thing in the newspaper really didn't adequately communicate, so I'm just, I'm just trying to pose it. If you understood that all we're doing is authorizing the police department to accept guns, and we're using no public funds, it's a private, a private group on private property using their own money, no tax, collecting the guns, all we're allowing the police department to do is to take possessions of the guns they buy that they have to bring to the police department. We're not on-site, we have no involvement, other than to have the guns delivered to us, and state law requires us, this council has to authorize the police department to receive. So there's no city people collecting the guns, there's no city money getting the guns, we're not operating the event on public property. I know that's not in this, if you read it in the paper, but does that change your view of what's going on, in light of knowing that the facts are that we're not engaged in any way in the transaction?
And getting them off the street.
I just, that makes me feel better, that no tax dollars are being used. However, the police are involved, so they're actually taken away from what they could be doing to prevent crime, but I do appreciate that no tax dollars are being used, because that was my, that was my hot button.
Thank you, ma'am.
I don't like wasted tax dollars.
But I can understand how you could, from the summary, could misunderstand what's happening.
Yeah, because that was not the way it was presented.
Ms. Haney would like to speak.
And Vice Mayor, and to the members of council, there are no on-duty police officers that are being pulled off of duty. In fact, the time is being covered by the private entity for the police officers. There's no on-duty officers being pulled off of duty for this.
Okay, appreciate it.
So even that's not, thank you.
The next speaker is Shanina Harris Francis, I'm sorry. After Ms. Francis is Roger Schoonover.
Greetings, honorable council. If I were you, I'd be wondering why a person from, who's not from Virginia Beach would be here? Well, I'm here representing Hampton Roads Black Caucus. We're trying to do this event, simply because, if you haven't noticed in the seven cities, there is a major crime spree going on, and major gun violence going on. So I am not in the disbelief that this gun buyback will solve all crime and all gun violence, but it's a start. It is something. That's all we're trying to do. We're trying to do something to help our communities. And hopefully, if this is successful, we can go to other cities and start there, because, believe it or not, we're all in the Hampton Roads together. And so we have to start somewhere, and this is just a start. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out, and we appreciate the Black Caucus for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Roger Schoonover. And then Diana Howard.
Well, Madam Vice Mayor, and members of the council, thank you very much for the opportunity. And by the way, Rosemary, thanks for the update on Bobby Dyer's health. Appreciate that. My name is Roger Schoonover. I live at 1105 White Stone Way, and I am a board member of the Hampton Roads Black Caucus. And I am here in support of the firearms buyback initiative. Buyback initiatives, buyback programs have long been of interest, and there's a fair amount of research that goes, that has been done to determine what really makes them successful. And there are two things that seem to come to the fore. The first is how the program is run, that is, what are the rules? The second is whether it is a sort of a one-shot event, pardon the pun, or whether it's part of a long-term cooperative community effort. So how it is done is really important. The type of weapons, the price that is paid for those weapons, and whether those are weapons that are indeed used in the community for homicides and crime, that is, what is the relevance of the guns being collected to community violence? And everything I've seen of the Virginia Beach efforts suggests that this gun buyback is being done correctly. We're using the right rules. The second thing, or second point is, early research focused on gun buyback efforts, and the answer of the research is very clear, unequivocal, did not work, absolutely did not work. However, and it's a big however, in recent years, research has clearly demonstrated that a gun buyback effort is, it works, if it, if it is, and will have an appropriate and positive impact on the community, if it is part of a broad, long-term cooperative, communication-based effort. By itself, no, but as a part of an overall community-based effort, it does work, and the statistics are very clear on that. This program, as I've seen it, meets these criteria very well. It is sponsored by the Hampton Roads Black Caucus. We expect monies to support that from other community organizations. It, we believe it has been endorsed by the Virginia Beach Police Department, and I'm here to encourage you to confirm your support for the city. And that covers the two major issues. We're going to do it right, and who's going to do it, and will it be effective? And I think the answer is, yes, it will be. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Diana Howard. After Ms. Howard is Reverend DeZille.
Welcome, Diana.
Hi, how you all doing? Okay. I appreciate the Hampton Roads Black Caucus doing this program. I know their heart's in the right place, but statistically, it doesn't reduce crime. No buyback gun program has ever been reported to have significantly reduced any gun crime. So I feel like you're giving the community a false sense of security when that's not going to happen. Is it my understanding that the police department has to be given permission to destroy guns? You can't just call up and say, you know, Uncle Thomas left me this gun and I don't want it, could you, could I turn it into you and it be destroyed?
Mr. Tari.
Yeah, I mean, they don't do that, because maybe they should. I mean, city council approval is required for the city's participation in a gun buyback program. If someone wants to individually come in to the police department and turn over a gun, I stand to be corrected by the chief, but I believe they do accept them. But this is to participate in a buyback program. Okay, because, you know, most of the guns turned in in a buyback program are old or inoperable, you know, they're not anything of significance that somebody is going to use in a criminal act, you know? So it doesn't reduce crime. So, I mean, you could authorize the police to do that. I mean, if people want to get rid of guns that they don't want in their homes, or whatever, they can turn it into Chesapeake Pawning Gun, certainly can't bring them to a medical, a metal disposal place and recycle them. So, I mean, doing some sort So, I mean, doing some sort of advertising that the police department will accept, you know, turn-ins of this kind, if you have guns that you don't want in your home that have been handed down to you or something like that. But maybe in, when they were talking about using some sort of, we need to concentrate on reducing crime itself, maybe we could do some community-based policing in hotspot areas where there are drugs and gang-related, you know, gangs and stuff like that, that are causing that kind of violence and stuff like that, to reduce crime. So we could concentrate on that instead, or, you know, in conjunction with this. Because the buyback program is just really symbolic and just, you know, not really effective without doing some sort of policing and community-based action along with the police department. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. The next three speakers are web acts. Reverend DeZil, if you will pause two to three seconds before beginning. You are unmuted, and you may begin.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jeremy Delzel. I'm a Virginia Beach citizen. The National Bureau of Economic Research has studied and concluded gun buyback programs, GPPs, which generally use public funds to purchase civilian privately-owned firearms aimed to reduce gun violence. However, next to nothing is known about their effects on firearm-related crimes or deaths. Using data from the National Incident Base Reporting System, we find no evidence that GPPs reduce gun crime. Given our estimated null findings, with 95% confidence, we can rule out decreases in firearm-related crime of greater than 1.3% during the year following a buyback. Using data from the National Vital Statistics System, we also find no evidence that GPPs reduce suicide or homicides where a firearm is involved. These results call into question the efficacy of city gun buyback programs in their current form. John Veronica, researcher from Johns Hopkins University, who has co-authored two studies on the matter, states there is no evidence the buyback programs reduce gun violence. These are just a couple of the endless list of research and studies that have been done, most of all which would support in conclusions. So the question is, will any funding come from the taxpayers in this process, such as police involvement, destruction of turned-in firearms? The fact of the matter is, a very large percent of the firearms turned in are typically not the type of weapons that are used in crimes or violence, nor are the majority of the folks turning them in. It is extremely unlikely that a criminal felon would take part in such a program, as stated in most all cases proves this to be true. It has also reported that most citizens turning in firearms are turning in old, worn-out, or broken guns to fund the purchase towards a new firearm, and more than likely still possess more firearms that were not turned into the GPP. I feel we are far better off addressing the root of the problem. Gun violence stems from organized crime and gang-related activities. It seems any effort and funding would be far better spent combating these issues. It has also been shown that teaching basic gun safety, starting at younger ages, to be very beneficial. And one additional question that I have, if this is a private organization that is putting this on, and private citizens are bringing guns to sell to this private organization, should there not be universal background checks done on every purchase that we as private citizens have to do amongst ourselves? If there's no police involvement, other than the drop-off, how are we to know where these guns are actually going? I guess that's all I have to say, so I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Speaker is Robert Dean. Mr. Dean, if you will pause two to three seconds before beginning, you are unmuted.
This evening, I would like to address the proposal brought forth by councilmembers Linwood Branch and Lewis Jones. I will be speaking on behalf of the Tyler Libertarian Party. I would like to preface my remarks by asking both Mr. Branch and Mr. Jones if either have or currently own weapons, and if they do, are they, as an act of endorsement for their proposal, going to be the first citizens to turn in weapons? And as an additional measure of support, I would suggest that Mr. Branch and Mr. Jones and any supporters of this initiative step and pledge their city council pay of $28,000 towards the funding of this buyback program, which is currently unknown. Mr. Branch, I understand you have past experience in handling weapons, so I guess that is the reason why your name is on this worthless proposal. And why do I say worthless? Simply because the compelling data that clearly shows gun-backed buy programs do not work. Here are the stats, and from the National Bureau of Economic Research, July 2021. GPPs, which use public funds to purchase civilians privately-owned firearms, aim to reduce gun violence. However, next to nothing is known about their effects on firearm-related crimes or deaths. Using data from the National Incident Base Reporting System, we find no evidence that GPPs reduce gun crime. Given our estimated null findings with 95% confidence, we can rule out decreases in firearm-related crime of greater than 1.3% during the year following a buyback. Using data from the National Vital Statistics System, we also find no evidence that GPPs reduce suicides or homicides where a firearm was involved. These results call into question the efficacy of city gun buyback programs in their current form. We highlight three key findings. First, using data from the 1991 to 2015 National Incident Base Reporting System, we find no evidence that GPPs are effective at deterring gun crime either in the short or longer run. The precision of our estimates is such that with 95% confidence, we can rule out decreases in gun crime of 1.3% in the 12 months following a GPP, and 2.3% a year or more after a GPP. Second, in the two months following a GPP, we detect a small increase in gun crimes with no corresponding change in gun crimes. This finding is consistent with a possible criminal response to perceptions that the likelihood of self-defense among law-abiding gun owners. Finally, turning to data from the National Vital Statistics System, we find no evidence that gun buyback programs affected firearm-related suicides or homicides. And in conclusion, from Professor Eugene Volofsky, University of California, the people you're most worried about, criminals, they're either not going to turn in their guns, or if they do turn in their guns, they'll turn in some old, broken-down guns, get some money for it, and buy a new gun. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
The next speaker is Victoria Nichols. Ms. Nichols, if you'll pause two to three seconds before beginning, you are unmuted. Ms. Nichols, if you'll proceed with your comments. Thank you. Somebody like to put a motion on the table, Mr. Branch?
So would I. Second, make a motion to approve, and was that a second? Okay, Lewis, second.
Any discussion?
I just want to thank,
I called in to speak on this same thing, but.
I don't have a card for you, sir. What's your name?
Joelle Jones. I called earlier today. She put me down.
Sorry, I don't have a card for you, but we can sure get a card. Is that okay, Vice Mayor? Sure. Mr. Jones, you can go ahead and come on up. I'm sorry. We'll have you fill a card out after you're finished speaking.
Thank you. Man, that's a lot of people. First of all, I want to say thank you, counsel. Thank you very much for having me here. I hate redundancy, so I'm not going to go through all the statistics about what everybody's been saying. So first, a little bit about my background. I'm a retired Navy chief, 25 years. I just retired last year. I'm also the gun president for a national African-American gun association here in Virginia Beach. All right, we have a membership of 106 personnel, about 67 black women, all right? And so why am I here today? I'm with the Hampton Roads Black Caucus. I'm on the executive board. And I was a little bit moved when I saw all the opposals. All right, so let me tell you my background. Before I joined the Navy, I was a gang member, all right? Got initiated at the age of 13. Back in 1990s, you know, that era when black men were like, considered, they had this whole thing called, oh man, you're not going to make it. So I wasn't supposed to live until I was 24, all right? I wish somebody had thought about a gun buyback program. Now, I wouldn't have turned my gun in, but I know that somebody in the community would have came in and said, guess what, we care enough. So the purpose of Hampton Roads Black Caucus and this gun buyback program is not really to expect people to turn in their firearms. It's to say, guess what? I got somebody in this community who cares. I'm a firearm instructor. And in 1994, you know what Joe Biden said about me? I was a predator, a black man. I looked like you, looked like you, and by you, by association. I'm the oldest of 15 children. That's 12 young sisters. I trained people. I've trained 135 people, 88 black women this year. And you know what? There's one, she had five sons. And guess what? Just about, three of those boys had guns that she don't even know where they got them from. I sat them down. I sat them down to talk to them. I said, hey ma'am, if you're going to have a gun, you need to be educated. And nobody had ever, ever said that to them. So if we don't get out there in the streets, in the hood, you look at me as that gang member. Who's going to bring firearms to your neighborhood, your district, your district, your child, your grandkids? But you cannot sit up here and say that you are opposed to doing something that's going to get you out there in a community. Get faced. In the Navy, as leaders, you got to get out there and get on the street where the rubber meets the road. You can sit here and be comfortable behind this chair, make votes, do what you got to do. But if you don't get out there, you're failing the people that you're supposed to be leading and representing. Now, I don't know about y'all, I don't care about statistics. I know that for a fact. I got plenty of firearms. I'm not turning in nothing, but I want to educate. I want to educate the people. I want to tell them, hey, gun safety, lock your firearms up. I'm tired of hearing kids shooting their parents during Zoom meetings. You know, cleaning firearms, killing a woman next door, that's stupid. So that's what I'm here for. I don't care about the numbers. I just care about getting in front of people and making things happen, educating and training our people, especially our young black boys and girls. That's all I got.
And thank you for your service.
You're welcome, sir.
Okay.
All right, I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
I want to speak from personal experience.
You would know.
I, I'm in the funeral business, have been for over 60 years. And I can't tell you, I can't remember the exact count, but I can tell you that it's more than I can count on these two hands of young people who have gotten hold of the gun in their home unbeknown to their parents because it wasn't locked up, or the parents just forgot it was even there. And they ended up either shooting themselves, or they shot their brother, or their sister, or somebody else. And if buying back a few guns is going to stop that from happening in a family, then I'm all for it. And that's why I endorse this ordinance. I think it's the right thing to do, and if it saves one life, it's worth it.
Mr. Moss.
My only comment is, this is people exercising their individual right to spend their money on an initiative. They could be buying back quilts, and it wouldn't bother to me, because it's the same principle of people doing something that they think helps with their own resources. And if it wasn't for the fact that the state law required us to pass a resolution that we don't have to do for individuals, we wouldn't even be acting. So this, not to support this, is really to impede people exercising their right to have an activity that's lawful. So I don't care if it's effective or not. They think it makes a difference? The law says they can go for it? We're empowering people to exercise the liberty that we all say we're going to defend. And it doesn't take any, like that guy says, I'm out there, but you're not getting mine, but he understands. I think he was a great spokesman for buyback programs everywhere, and he ought to somehow get it copyrighted and get royalties on it. But I think it's hard to get in the way of people exercising their liberty.
Okay, voting board's open? If I vote a ten to zero, you've approved the ordinance. Okay, so now we're into planning. K1. Would you like me to call speakers? Yes, please. Thank you. The first speaker is Lisa Murphy. Ms. Murphy is representing the applicant, correct?
Good evening, Vice Mayor Wilson, members of city council, the city attorney, city manager, and staff. For the record, my name is Lisa Murphy. I'm a local attorney, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Murphy's Irish Pub, or Murphy's of Virginia Beach. Again, still no relation, but after the deferral, as you may recall, 60 days ago, Mr. Mooney asked me to work with him to try to get this approved, so that's why I'm here before you tonight. As some of you may not know, because I don't think it was part of the staff report, Murphy's Irish Pub of Old Town Alexandria has been around for over 45 years. So that's the initial Murphy's Irish Pub. It's a place that, having grown up in Northern Virginia, is frequented by many Northern Virginians. It's a family-run business. It was started by Tom's father, and he's now carried on the family business. In 2003, Tom said, let's, where can we expand the business? And so they looked in the market and said Hampton Roads looks like a place to be. They originally actually looked in Norfolk and decided that Virginia Beach would be a better home. So Murphy's of Virginia Beach has now been here since 2003, so for 18 years, they've been in Hampton Roads. Murphy's has been providing outdoor amplified music since 2016. As the staff report indicates, as a result of the pandemic, like many other restaurants, last year, they expanded their outdoor dining area to include a bigger area, in large part, so that they could continue to serve customers. Murphy's is seeking alternative compliance for the stage walls of a stage that will be, is partially built on the property. Those stage walls will be over six feet tall, so they have to be approved for alternative compliance. And then to have reoccurring outdoor events in addition to the outdoor live music that they already have. So as the staff report indicates, the outdoor live music is really considered an accessory right now to the restaurant use itself. But in order to really build up this stage for outdoor special events, gatherings, those types of things, they need this alternative compliance. One of the things that I wanted to point out, and I don't know if I have a clicker, the area that we're talking about, just, it's not going to work, to orient everybody, this is the stage area over here. So you've got 30th Street there, Pacific, and in this corner of the existing parking lot is where they're proposing to put the stage. And then you see the red hashed areas. Those are the sound attenuation walls that they're building on three sides of the stage. They'll have a roof over the stage as well. But if you can see, it's oriented to the southeast, so it's oriented towards the oceanfront. Other thing I wanted to point out that really didn't come out at the last meeting is you look, the side of the building actually buffers most of this interior or exterior dining area. So you've got a part of the building that's there to block the sound as well. And that's really how it was designed. So you'd have enclosure for the stage with, and the outdoor area is actually enclosed with an iron stone railing and landscaping. And then you've got, as I said, the building on one side, again, really blocking the noise or the outdoor music, outdoor events that are really focused towards the oceanfront area. I wanted to hand you some photos. These do a little bit better job of showing, I don't know, Bobby, you guys, yeah, that kind of shows it, so.
Lisa, the only thing is, we can't pick up your sound when you leave the microphone.
I can't get this thing to work. But if you look at the corner, it's a whitish thing. It looks like staff is kind of drawn in. That shows you the stage and the stage orientation. So it's actually oriented towards the building itself and then towards the oceanfront, if you can see that. So you've got the parking area behind it, and then the side of the building right there, which does a pretty good job of showing the, how that outdoor area is really going to be enclosed. On the pictures I gave you, there's a black X with a box built around it and an arrow pointed to it. That's that same area. That's that same area. But it kind of gives you the sense of that area in relation, uh, to the other properties around it. As I said, the stage will be enclosed with an eight-foot-tall sound attenuation wall on three sides with a roof, again, all to block noise from going off-site. As many of you know, the resort area strategic plan calls for a mix of uses to attract year-round activity and visitors. As the staff report indicates, the unique activities proposed at Murphy's, in addition to the live, uh, music, which right now is an accessory use, would include movie screenings, uh, nonprofit events, sporting events. Along with its location at the Alaskan Gateway Area lends to the creation of a memorable and successful place even during the off-season, which I said, again, supports the city's goal of being a year-round destination. The staff had originally recommended approval. Planning Commission also recommended approval with the addition of a condition that would limit those outdoor special events to just 15 during the year. Uh, and with that additional condition, staff recommended approval. I, in, in looking at the, uh, the staff report and looking at the, the video of the prior hearings, um, wanted to modify the conditions really to do a couple of things. Number one, the first condition has been modified to describe the way the stage should be oriented, so that it's to the southeast away from the, um, any of the residential uses on 30th Street. But also to, uh, add a condition or modify condition, which is now number four, that describes the three different types of sound attenuation. So you've got an eight-inch grout-filled CMU wall, stucco insulation on either side, reinforced sound barriers. Each of those things actually has an STC, Sound Attenuation Rating. But staff didn't really want to get into those numbers. But suffice to say that there are three separate forms of sound attenuation that would be built into that wall. As I said, staff recommended approval and Planning Commission did as well. The proposal before you advances the goals and objectives of the resort area Strategic Action Plan and the Oceanfront Resort District Form-Based Code. It promotes alternative forms of, uh, transportation. So you've got walking and biking, people that can actively engage with the site. It's in scale with other pedestrian-oriented activities and provides visual interest. Again, it adds to this mix of compatible uses in the area, which creates a memorable and a successful place. And the conditions that have been added, again, the 10 conditions, we feel really, uh, mitigate any potential impact that would be brought about by these additional outdoor activities. We would respectfully request that you approve this tonight. I'm happy to answer questions. Mr. Mooney is here as well to answer questions. And with that, I will, uh, request your approval.
Thank you. Next speaker. Okay. David Fineis. After Mr. Fineis is Tyler Brooks.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My, uh, residence of four years is probably 55 feet from the backside of that stage. And I'll tell you guys honestly, in the past four years I've lived there, I have not once had a single problem with any loud noise, anything past, uh, any time that normally people would stop playing or came to the oceanfront. For three years, I worked for beach events, run stages down the oceanfront. So I know all about sound levels and times people have to stop. And in no time, not once in four years, have I ever had a problem with them. Other restaurants at the beach with younger crowds didn't have a lot more like police issues and stuff like that. There's a restaurant right in front of, of the condos where people are complaining about. And I think that the, the noise that comes from there, I hear more than I hear from Murphy's right across the street from my house. So I just would like to, the, the landscaping they've done already is beautiful. And anything I think that they can contribute to the artery district, they're trying to create there along Alaskan Road would be great. This, I think is a great idea. The walls that they're talking about putting up, it'll definitely push the sound towards the oceanfront. I tend to hear more the stage at 31st Street, the concerts they have there than I do from Murphy's because it's usually just two guys with an acoustic guitar, small amplifier. So I think it's a great idea and I have no opposition to it.
Thank you for coming out. Tyler Brooks. After, uh, Mr. Brooks is Barbara Messner.
Good evening, council. My name's Tyler Brooks. I live at adjacent, uh, townhomes to Murphy's. I'm from this area, love this area. I work in commercial real estate and I work with similar small businesses that of Murphy's. So I now understand during COVID that they had to do different things to make money and get through COVID. I've been a patron of Murphy's for over 15 years and enjoy it. And hopefully after tonight, I'll still be able to go there. My one concern or several concerns are the noise. You know, I hear the noise. If it's not from Murphy's, maybe it's from another asylum shit down the way. Who's going to police the 15 times that they can use that stage a year? Who's going, going to police the noise level? So those were, I'm concerned with as well, the value of our house. Will that affect it at all? In the meantime, I don't know, but it could down the line. So I, I do oppose this use. I think that it could bring more noise and it could be a domino effect down the line. Could it be another establishment that makes another stage and uses it for those events? Thank you.
Barbara Messner. And then after Ms. Messner is Morris Fine.
I think, um, this was noted, I was here when this was brought up before, that Lisa Murphy is in charge of the, uh, economic development, uh, meetings. And she works for, uh, Wilcox Savage, which I think is a major conflict. And I have a right, Mr. Moss, to speak about conflicts, including yours. It's my right and don't call me out. It's not your place, it's my free speech. And I, I do have facts. And I was able to post them on my Facebook before some people had, uh, taken down. So I do know what I'm talking about. And if you'd answered my emails and you didn't block me, we could communicate.
Please stay on topic, Ms. Messner.
Okay, um, all right. Okay. Like I said, um, the entire oceanfront is a commercial venue. When I go to the Harris Teeter, I can hear the, the loud music from almost everywhere. And because of the pandemic, you're allowing people to, which you shouldn't have done anyway. It's like Abbey Road Restaurant, they've lost 90, 97% of their business because they don't have a big enough area. You're allowing people to put their, um, huge tents. Murphy's has a huge heated tent. How is that social distancing when it's a sealed tent in, in the winter and they have heat on? So you're not protecting anybody by doing this, they're just expanding it. And the quality of life for everyone, everyone doesn't want to party. You know, people can live at the oceanfront. It doesn't mean that every single thing has to be an entertainment venue. And another thing, at one time, if you, if you, uh, if you wanted a permit to open a business, you had to have parking for all of your customers. And with the short-term rentals and with these restaurants and all, all these places, they're allowed to purchase taxpayer-funded, uh, parking garages that are supposed to be for the public. They're not for the public. You know, people can buy $70 a month passes and park in there. So I'm opposed to everything being an event. Church is having an event. Everything's an event and it's, it's ridiculous. Thank you.
The next speaker is Morris Fine. Good evening, Morris.
Good, good evening, Vice Mayor and City Council members, city attorney and city manager. I'm Morris Fine. I am an attorney of some number of years here in, in Virginia Beach. And I represent Lance Goldner, who owns, uh, 71 apartment units, uh, within debatable, is it 50 feet or 75 feet of the proposed, uh, entertainment, uh, that, uh, the Murphys, uh, are going to have here. Have you approved? I'm sorry. I've been sitting here so long, I, um, I'm a little shaky this, uh, this evening. It seems to me that what we're talking about is business encroaching on individual residents here in Virginia Beach. We have an existing, uh, residents there. At least 71 are there. And we also have Mr. Brooks, who lives in some other townhouses, not owned by Mr. Goldner. And it seems like they were there first. And now Murphy's is going to bring in a new element. It's entertainment. And it's, it's gotta be noise. They can, they can put up all of the blocks that they want. But as my client said in the newspaper, and I said before you last time we were here, the noise doesn't stop at the property line. I happen to live, fortunately, on 69th Street in Virginia Beach. I've lived there for 70 years. But I can hear, I can hear, uh, the Star Spangled Banner when it's, starts off at, at Fort Story, which is probably would have been 120th Street. So the noise is gonna be here. And it defies logic to say that you can, uh, contain that noise. I know my time is up. Really, this is about respect. Respect for the existing residents. You wouldn't want this to be built next to your house. And I wouldn't want it next to my house. And I think that ought to be the, the criteria.
Ms. Murphy? Would you like to come up for rebuttal? Thank you.
Good evening again, I'll, I'll be brief. You know, one of the things that we have here is a track record. Murphy's is a family-run and operated business, as you heard. They've had live entertainment outdoors for over five years now. If there was going to be a problem with how they operated their outdoor business, we would have heard about it. As you heard at the last meeting, there had been no reports of any issues to the second precinct. I think some of you have confirmed that independently. So this is a business that is, has been a good business in the resort area, which is, incidentally, is a mixed-use area. You've got, and that's what makes it so vibrant, you've got a mix of residential, uh, and commercial uses. And, and Murphy's is really trying to be a good neighbor in that regard. And by orienting the stage the way they are, by building sound attenuation walls. I mean, some of the reason people are hearing, uh, music coming from other venues is there's no sound attenuation. So by going in the extra mile and putting in the sound attenuation, three-sided walls with the roof over it, uh, and the three different types of sound attenuation, again, this will be far better, uh, situated than any of the other entertainment, live, uh, entertainment at the oceanfront. Parking is addressed in your staff report. There's, uh, 61 spaces in total, 33 onsite. And then you've got, uh, 15 under a long-term, uh, agreement and then 13 overflow. So there's, there's plenty of parking. I wanted to show you, if you look at that and, uh, the aerial I gave you might do a little bit better job. But directly next to, so if you go to the, to the south of the Cross Hatch is a Taco Bell. So there's a Taco Bell property there. If you go to the west of the Taco Bell, there are two individual lots with single-family homes. And those are, all of that's in between where the, uh, the Murphy's building is, let alone the stage, and those two, uh, rectangular buildings on either side of 29th Street, which I believe are Mr. Fine's clients. There's also, uh, in addition to the wall of the building blocking that particular property line, you can't see it as well from this picture, but there's trees and foliage and other, uh, other buildings blocking. So I'm not sure where they got the, the 50 feet or 75 feet number. But it's a, a much longer distance than it is across the street to, uh, to Mr. Fine's home, uh, which is literally, from what I understand, across 30th Street from, uh, from Murphy's and from the actual, uh, stage itself. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. But we believe with the 10 conditions, including the modified conditions that we've proposed, that Murphy's will continue to be a good corporate citizen, uh, a good family-run business. And with these limited, limited additional outdoor special events, that they will continue to be a vibrant contributor to our city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Tower.
I, you can, I don't have any questions, Ms. Murphy, thank you. I, I just want to, uh, thank the parties, both those who have appeared in favor and opposed for your information and your stability. This, this is a step up. This is not the two guitar, two guys playing guitars, which everybody has said is what's been happening. We're talking about some more activities here, uh, than what we've had in the past. So it's something that, um, I, I'm kind of holding my breath about. And I'm sure, I'm sure Mr. Goldner and his tenants are, are doing the same. I appreciate that they've, uh, the applicant is a, runs a good business, that they've made additional accommodations to try to do even more to contain the sound on the property. I think it's meaningful. I hope it's helpful. I hope that we, what, I think what we ultimately need is some kind of sound ordinance that's applicable, not just to this property, but to a number of properties that may seek, either have or seek this kind of entertainment issue. I'm certainly mindful of the mixed-use na- nature of the neighborhood. I'm certainly mindful of Murphy's desire to be a good neighbor, but the, we are, we're jumping, jumping into something that we haven't done before here in terms of the types of entertainment. I hope it works, but I don't feel that it's fair to hold up this application to get a, a noise ordinance that I'm happy with. I think we ought to work on it. But given that we're moving into a colder season here, hopefully, maybe we can work out a noise ordinance also. If this gets approved, I'm gonna move for its approval. Depending on Ms. Murphy's representation of her client's willingness to be a good neighbor and hope that that, uh, turns out. I, I have no way of measuring this sound, how good this sound attenuation is. I think it's a good faith effort to try to solve, solve the problem. But I think we still need a new, a new noise ordinance that if we find that it's not doing the job, that people have some recourse. The current noise ordinance is problematical. We need a new one. And I appreciate Mr. Stiles has drafted one. I've taken a preliminary look at it, I think Mr. Moss has as well. And hopefully we'll be able to bring that to council soon. But I don't feel like it's fair to hold up this application. This is a demonstration project, in a way, as I understand it, for some of the, what may also happen in the neighborhood. And so I am cautious about approving this, but I think I, I will move, move its approval with urging, urging, uh, the owners of Murphy's to realize that, um, a lot, they're gonna have a lot of eyes on here. And, uh, they need, need to do everything they can to keep the sound within, within the property as much as they can. I think Mr. Goldner is right. It doesn't, sound doesn't stop at property lines. But, uh, I think that we can, I'm hoping we can come up anyway with some reasonable regulations so that any sound that is leaking out is not something that bothers people. You can still get your good night's sleep in your apartment and carry on other business that needs to be carried on. Thanks again for the people that are.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll, I'll second that.
Ms. Henry.
Would you want to say something?
Yes, I do. I, I have a lot of concern. Is it possible?
Is it possible that maybe we could put a year limit on this one, and that it would be determined in a year by the council if it's to be continued? I know that you're hoping this is gonna work, but I had experience with this one down in the county, again, this Sunday, that they have added a lot of outdoor things and outdoor activities and special events. And the thing that worries me is our inspectors think it's okay to have cars parked along two sides of a very narrow, blind road next to a swamp with a whole line of other cars waiting to turn in, and nobody else able to even get on the lot because it's all jammed up. I don't think that's acceptable. But our inspectors think it's okay. And I don't know that this third condition, "The operation shall not disturb the tranquility of residential areas or other areas in close proximity, or otherwise interfere with the reasonable use and enjoyment of neighboring property by reason of excessive noise, traffic, lighting, or overflow parking." I think that sounds mighty good, but I don't think it's enforceable, or at least I don't think our folks are gonna enforce it. I'm sorry, I've lost confidence. And so, I mean, if this is one that is going to be able to work well, I would love for them to do it, but you're holding your breath. Well, I can tell you, another one that's not operating very well and is not, I mean, it's been going on for months that there have been complaints, and we're not doing anything to stop it. So I don't have the confidence that we're going to be able to do anything if this one doesn't work out. And so I'm afraid of it.
Mr. Moss?
Unless somebody can show me that we could really enforce this condition three. Because even if there are complaints, to go through the system of pulling back, this isn't a use permit, is it? This is, this is allowing it. I mean, it's a long, lengthy process. So I just don't have the confidence, from what I'm seeing with one similar to this, which is a restaurant that's been in place for a number of years, it's now added a lot of outdoor activities and special events and games, and it's a mess.
Mr. Moss?
Well, I certainly can appreciate the anecdotal inconsistency in how we enforce things. And I can see that Mr. Duhany was taking notes. And I have seen him be very good and very proactive in his ability to recalibrate the workforce's expectations to meet the council's intent. And I would think that he's going to, and I know that you're very aggressive about protecting your district, so I'm betting out...
I've tried, but I'm getting no place.
Well, I'm sure after tonight you are, 'cause I can see Mr. Duhany there smiling. So I can tell that's gonna be worked on. And I have found him to be very effective. And we've made a good hire there. But I also know that businesses to make investments also have to amateurize that investment. And I appreciate, you know, what capitalism requires. And so I'm betting as much on Mr. Duhany as I am betting on the others. I know we have a lot of things on our plate, but we did get a sound proposal on thing, and I thought that people probably didn't want to spend their Christmas holidays on the council reviewing a sound ordinance. So I thought we would, Mr. Tower and I would get that out to you after the first of the year to take a look and get it out in the community as well, so the community can see it and think if that's going to work. But I am willing to take a risk, and I'm not doubting there's some risk, and I think you are correct, that some of that stuff is like the preamble of the Constitution, nice but not legally enforceable. But I'm also relying upon the representation of the client as well. And sometimes, that's what we have to do. And I think this is a case where we can move forward, and we're gonna get that two bifurcated criminal and civil prosecution noise ordinance, and we'll be able to make that work. So I stand by, I'll defer to the second by Mr. Branch, but that's my reasons for supporting the application.
Mr. Branch?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Well, I don't think Murphy's should be paying for the sins of others. And since the sixty-day deferral, I did check with the police department. Haven't had any complaints from Murphy's. I checked with the planning department because the verbatim from the planning commission indicated that Chichos was the problem, a neighboring restaurant and not Murphy's. And they actually went and spoke with Chichos. It was at the end of the season, so we'll see if they're on good behavior for next year. But I also spoke with our resort management office, as you know, we just started a new resort management office that has code enforcement in it. And Ms. Bleakley and I have had conversations. So she has had her first year under her belt. She's got that operation running very efficiently, and I fully expect the code enforcement folks under her direction to really be out there working. And her and I have had conversations about this particular restaurant, Chichos, that seems to be the problematic place down there. So there's gonna be a lot of eyes down there. But from all that I can see and hear, Murphy's has not been a problem. And I think that sound attenuation stage is gonna direct even more of that music away from the residential behind it. So for those reasons, I will be supporting this as well.
And I'd like to say I'm gonna be supporting it. I drive past it just about every day in my life. It's a good neighbor. It's a good business, and people like it. And I know that it's got a good operator. So I appreciate your indulgence with us as a council, and I'm happy to support it. So are you ready for the question?
I'm gonna be voting no, but I would vote yes if it were a year that we would get a chance to review it.
I just hope we can help you with the one down there that's causing the problem. I'm sure we're gonna get a lot of help.
Mr. Berlucy, you may have your vote. Mr. Rouse, thank you. By a vote of nine to one, you've approved the application of Murphy's of Virginia Beach.
Okay, so we are moving on to, I think it's the last item that we're hearing tonight. Winters Properties, number seven, in Rose Hall.
The first speaker is Billy Garrington. Mr. Garrington, you're representing the applicant, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. You're fine. Just wanted to make sure you're representing the applicant.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the city council, especially Mr. Berluci. Mr. Berluci, since this is in your district, I thank you for hearing us, hearing this case tonight. This case, as you know, was here a couple months ago and was deferred, and we are back in front of you. We were at the planning commission, I'm sorry. And the request in front of you today is for Winters Property at Thirty-Seven Thirty-Six Centerra Way for a new Genesis car dealership. But there's actually a two-part process in place here because there's an existing dealership that is right next door to where we're at, which is the cause of all the problems that we're having and of all the neighborhood opposition. But it's owned by the same dealership, by the same family. But it's two separate parcels of land. And as you know, properties can always be sold later on down the road. So it is two separate operations, even though it's owned by the same company. So the Hyundai World Building is the one that was the old driver's world, that was built in nineteen ninety-seven and was remodeled in two thousand and thirteen. That's adjacently to the east of where we're at, and the property that we're looking at now is a three-point-two-two-acre wooded site. It is also the site of where a office building was already previously approved about two, two and a half years ago that has not been built. And the Checkered Flag people were buying the property to build the Genesis store on it. Stormwater has already been looked at, engineered, designed, and approved by the city staff, so there's no issues with stormwater. Tree removal has already been approved on the previous site plan that was for the office building that was gonna be built on the building. So those are some of the issues that we talked with the neighbors about. They were concerned about stormwater. They were concerned about the tree removal, too. And with the tree removal, they claim that they get more traffic noise off of Interstate Two-Sixty-Four. That's just not something we can, there's no way we can adjust, no way we can do anything to stop that from happening. Interstate Two-Sixty-Four is not gonna go away, and that property is gonna be developed in one fashion or another. It's either gonna be something like this that requires a use permit, where they have the right to come down and speak about it, or it's gonna be some by-right operation on that piece of property. It's gonna be just as, probably more of a nuisance to the neighborhood than what we've got now. The building that we have designed is a prototype one-story Genesis building. It's only twenty-five feet in height. The office building that was there before was thirty-six feet in height. So we're smaller than that, and there are numerous conditions in the staff write-up from the planning commission that have to do with outside paging, has to do with lighting, has to do with the hours of operation, no storage of any inoperable vehicles, where they can be stored at. There also is a condition on this Genesis site that says we cannot offload new cars in the public right-of-way. Has to be done on private property. I think one of the main problems with the Hyundai World is just that, is when those new car carriers pull up, and they pull up at very odd times. They're all independent contractors. It's not like ordering a pizza from Domino's where you can track them and say, "It's gonna be here in thirty minutes, let's get ready for it." They show up at odd hours of the night, and I'm sure it is a nuisance. But that's something that can be controlled through management, okay? Just like with the dumpster truck that comes at all hours of the morning and empties the dumpster. That also can be done through management, if you bring it to their attention that there is a problem with it. The lawn care people come over there and cut the grass, and when they get finished, what's the last thing they do? They're all walking down the side of the street with the leaf blowers on the back of their back, blowing all the leaves over on the other side of the road. That infuriates the residents. That also can be taken care of through management. So when we met with the one gentleman who was in opposition to it, and he's here tonight, we asked him to come up with a list of things and give it to us, and let's see if we can't get them solved. And I still make that same suggestion to him tonight. So there are two separate buildings there. This is gonna be the Genesis store. The Hyundai World is eleven acres as opposed to a three-point-two acre. So you're really talking about David and Goliath when you talk about the size of the two operations. The Hyundai World store is built backwards from the one that we're doing for Genesis. The service department is on the south side of the property, right up against the residential neighborhood. On the Genesis store, the service department will be on the north side, facing towards Interstate Two-Sixty-Four. So the majority of the noise that you're gonna get coming out of this building is gonna be from the service department. It's not gonna be from the sales operation. So these two buildings will be built in two separate, in two different ways. But again, the driver's world was already there when the Checkered Flag people bought it back in nineteen ninety-seven. It wasn't one of their buildings that they built. So there are a number of conditions in the staff write-up that come from the planning commission that we're in total agreement with. We realize there's a problem next door. There's some lighting issues. I had asked staff to take a look if, to see if there was a condition on the original driver's world about the offloading of vehicles on the city right-of-way, but I never got an answer back. But I think that's probably the genesis of where the problem starts at, is the dumpster truck coming, it's the new car carriers coming, it's the noise coming out of the dealership. But the simple fact of the matter is, you could deny the request for the Genesis, and those issues are still gonna be there. Or you could approve it, and we can work together, get with the people who are being bothered by it, get a list from them, get them with the dealership people, and make sure that through management and through cooperation, we start being a good neighbor. And that's what we offered to do when we met with them onsite, and I'm offering to do it again. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have about the operation. At the planning commission, there was only three people that showed up, and I'm sure that's because it was during the daytime hours. Two of those were the BMX bike riders, as you probably have read in the newspaper and saw on the news. So there is a significant number of people here tonight. I wanna first off apologize for putting you in the position of referee. Apologize also to them for bringing down here this late at night. But it's a process that you gotta go through. It's development, it's economic development, it's progress. And that's what we're trying to do.
Thank you. Ms. Henley?
I'm thinking of the triple bottom line we have to remember. It's economic development, but it's also social, and it's also environmental. In looking at, I guess it's condition one, that this is the site plan that you're going to be using?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, it shows, I guess it's on the site plan that it shows the areas that are to be not developed, not disturbed.
Not disturbed. Everything behind that BMP is not to be disturbed so that you won't, you can try to muffle some of that noise that's coming off Interstate Two-Sixty-Four.
So what about, it looks like it's beyond the BMP, but so along the area there that looks like it's undisturbed. Now, this isn't, these trees are not going to be cut and then replaced. They're just gonna stay as they are.
That's correct.
So could you just go to that map and show me what is going to stay as it is?
All of this area in here will stay exactly as it is.
Okay, the other part that looks like it's dark green you didn't point to?
This is the buffer restoration that you will install when the dealership is built.
Okay, so that other area that looks like trees isn't. It's, those are going to go away. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's just the ones by the BMP?
Everything behind the BMP, between the BMP and Interstate Two-Sixty-Four, will remain intact.
And, okay, and the...
And keep in mind, you're also gonna plant many more new trees on the property because the automobile display requires more screening and more buffering than it would be if it was just an office building. So there'll be a significant number of new trees that will be put on the property also because it is motor vehicle sales.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moss?
One of my universal experiences with car dealerships, and I unfortunately own more cars than drivers in my household of all different makes, but not looking for any sympathy there. But what I've noticed is that over time, quickly, the parking for both employees and people who go there gets consumed by cars who are trying to sell. And then next thing you know, and you can see this everywhere, so this is not anecdotal, I'll take you on a tour, is the cars are in the neighborhood, the cars are here, you go to the place, you, I won't name any of them here, but you can know what I'm talking about. So I'm curious here is, in all these conditions, what is the amount of parking that is being used for the employees, so they'll be onsite and not on the street? And are you constraining yourself to the number of cars that are for sale consistent with making sure you're meeting, talking about, not inspections, meeting the standard? And so that we aren't pushing both the customers can actually navigate your parking lot without making a three-point turn? There's one specifically in mind. Louis probably knows what I speak. And we're not pushing the employees onto the parking on the street?
Well, in the staff write-up, the staff talks about how we have way more parking spaces on this property than the ordinance requires.
True. But what happens, and this is why I'm asking, because you can take delivery of a lot more cars, and then there's no parking for the employees, and that's how they end up in the street.
And you can ride down Centerra Way now, and you'll see cars parked on either side of the street.
Like I said, my case in point, and I'm just, I'm sure the district council members are aware of that, I'm just pointing out that when you think everything looks all beautiful in this, that there is a piece that isn't disciplined and not legally enforceable, that they consume the capacity, it gets back to the social, environmental issues, and it goes to retail cars to sale, and we push, and the neighborhood sees that. That's, I will, I'm pointing it out. I don't know if that's, it's, I'm not right there, but I've just seen it repetitively, and I think I'd be remiss if I didn't bring it to the body's attention, that it's something, that there's nothing in the conditions I saw that would preclude that.
You're correct.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Rouse?
So the one entity that could take care of that would be the city if they went out there and posted no parking signs on either side of Centerra Way. That's not something that we can regulate, but the city could.
Mayor, I have an environmental concern. Can you go back to the illustration of the tree outline?
This one?
No, sir, they're gonna pull it up, just a moment. There. So many of you may not know, I'm a bird enthusiast, and so I birdwatch quite often, especially driving down Two-Sixty-Four.
A hokie's not a bird.
Don't do that. Don't do that. Look, refrain, don't do that. He said a hokie wasn't a bird. Don't do that. But my concern, sir, is that, is for oftentimes, especially during winter months, I see raptors perched right along the interstate. And so I wanted to look up to see if red-tailed hawks were... And so, I wanted to look up to see if red-tailed hawks were protected species of birds here. And so, they are protected under the Federal Migratory Bird Treaty Act. You cannot destroy or harm in forest systems with problems, and red-tailed hawks, you can call the U.S. Wildlife Services. So, I just want to briefly give a brief description on why, this is important knowing to me, but the environment as well, but in the description describing red-tailed hawks, it says that the red-tailed hawk is perhaps the one, and by the way, I'm on the Virginia Wildlife Register, so it's not some, it's a sourceful website. Said the red-tailed hawk is perhaps one of the, perhaps the one with which most people are familiar, as it is commonly seen perched along roads and interstate highways, especially during the winter months. So, my concern is making sure that before, if this proposal goes forward, that there are any red-tailed hawks or any raptors or birds or species that would be caused undue harm by the removal of those trees. Can we have a condition to just make sure that type of oversight is done?
If you want to make that motion, Mr. Rouse, that's fine.
Yes. I would feel, I would sleep much better knowing that we're not.
This is a side of you we have.
The softer side.
Yeah. Well, I do have a softer side, yes. But that is a real concern of mine, sir.
As long as it's not a hokey out there, I'm okay with it.
All right. Now we're talking. But yes, I'd like to, if we could, mark add that it's just as a condition.
Mr. Bucchi, is that okay?
And if there is one, make the proper steps to remove it. Because it doesn't say you can't remove it, you're not allowed to go forward, it just says protective. Thank you.
Did I hear Mr. Garrington agree to that condition?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I apologize, Mr.
Do you want Mr. Stiles to do the wording for you?
I believe that I have, that my staff and Mr. Duhany's staff is going to work on that as we speak.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
It's good to see you, Billy. Okay. Next speaker.
Fran Sansone.
And then, the next speaker after that would be Peter Burning.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Fran Sansone, recording secretary for the Princess Anne Plaza Civic League, and don't be misled by the name Princess Anne Plaza, as the area is collectively known as the Plaza includes Bow Creek, Brookwood, Carriage Hill, the lakes, Northgate, and Pecan Gardens. Also within our league's geographic boundaries are Windsor Forest, Windsor Gate, Windsor Oaks, Windsor Oaks West, and Windsor Woods, all of which are on the west side of Rosemont Road and closer to the property in question. And no doubt Windsor Woods is a very familiar name, thanks to Hurricane Matthew five years ago dropping approximately 14 inches of water on Virginia Beach and flooding hundreds of homes in that area. And that flooding increased residents' awareness of how important infrastructure is, not only the effectiveness of gray infrastructure, as in storm drains, canals, and sewer systems to protect our homes, but also the value of green infrastructure as well. While green infrastructure elements, both natural and engineered, are planned and managed primarily for stormwater control, they also provide economic and environmental benefits. Runoff from stormwater continues to be a major cause of pollution in urban areas, carrying trash, bacteria, heavy metals, and other pollutants through stormwaters into local waterways, and eventually to the Chesapeake Bay and Atlantic Ocean. According to the EPA, green infrastructure systems provide cleaner air and water, as well as a significant value for the community with flood protection, diverse habitat, and beautiful green spaces, and we feel that the wooded area on Centerra Way is a wonderful example of natural green infrastructure. At our November meeting, the Civic League was made aware of this conditional use permit or CUP through the homeowner's request, through a homeowner's request for help and guidance. Unfortunately, the planning commission was meeting the next day, and we were unable to have a representative attend that. The league is asking for your consideration of at least postponing your vote on this CUP. In what many in the community would consider to be a perfect solution, the city buys this wooded acreage and rezones it to P1, Preservation District. And as defined by the city's P1 zoning ordinance and city code, it is the intent of the City of Virginia Beach to protect its atmospheres, lands, and waters from pollution, impairment or destruction for the benefit, enjoyment, and general welfare of the public. And critical areas of special concern include in part wilderness areas, open wetlands, floodplains, floodways, watersheds, and water supplies, and to conserve fish and wildlife. And these factors certainly can be applied to the Centerra acreage. In 2015, when the city adopted an urban tree canopy goal of 45% over the following 20 years, the urban tree canopy, or UTC, was 38%. And for clarification of those here this evening, UTC is defined as the layer of leaves, branches, and stems that cover the ground when viewed from above in urban areas. Within the city's own website, it's acknowledged that UTC is a key component to the city's stormwater management. I think we can all agree that these trees are a precious contributor to the UTC, and that they absorb stormwater in their leaves and branches, as well as their root systems. These tree canopies contribute to the reduction of summer peak temperatures and improve air quality. You know, an interesting fact is that one mature tree can capture as much carbon emissions as that emitted by one car driven 1,500 miles. And these woods in particular buffer and reduce the noise pollution from I-264. The city's land and development management office webpage says, "Land is a most precious resource, limited in amount, highly valued, often exploited, and a commodity that is constantly being sold, developed, and redeveloped. As the city has matured, its land inventory becomes even more precious. Management of land in its natural state demands that we employ wise management and stewardship practices that should be used in a sustainable manner so its value to present and future generations is maintained or enhanced." And short of your consideration to purchase the property, an alternative would still be to postpone voting on the CUP. As we feel negative impacts to adjoining properties haven't been properly addressed, it would give the applicant a chance to hear those concerns of neighbors and the Civic League, who are also potential customers, and address possible solutions and compromises to its planned property design and development, and possibly save more of the woods. And having our city district representative there as well would be helpful, I think, to everyone, a plus for everyone. We all want to be good neighbors, whether it's to the family next door or a business, and it's only natural to expect the same in return. For years, Windsor Woods Forest, excuse me, Windsor Forest residents have been exposed to different issues and CUP violations, some of which they've tried to manage on their own. Issues such as trash from the current dealership, employees who park along the street, car haulers unloading along Centerra Way, as well as using Rosemont Health and Rehab Parking Lot to maneuver their haulers, loudspeaker security announcements throughout the night and early morning hours, probably because of those foxes and rabbits running back and forth, and the new LED lights on poles that cast an incredible amount of light on homes across the street. Many in the community have expressed concerns with increased vehicle and commercial traffic as well on Rosemont Road between Centerra Way and I-264. The Traffic Impact Report suggests that the level of service is approaching unstable flow, stating speeds slightly decrease as traffic volume slightly increases, and freedom to maneuver within the traffic stream is much more limited, and drivers' comfort levels decrease. Well, I think local community members and those drivers who travel this road daily on Rosemont Road would say it's already an unstable flow, and it many times throughout the day, and it's getting worse with time. Now, I understand there are nearby residents here who are also going to speak and could do so more accurately on the issues and concerns that they have. So, in closing, we thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, and hope that you'll take our words into consideration, and at least postpone your vote and advocate for a compromise. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Peter Burning? And then, the next speaker will be Sandra Scheinavarger.
Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name's Peter Burning. I've lived at my current address on Presidential Boulevard, just across from Centerra Way, for over 21 years. I hope each of you had a chance to read the letter I sent, the email within attachment has a lot of details that I can't quite cover in three minutes. But I do have three reasons why I think you shouldn't approve this application's conditional permit today. First one is that the planning commission's recommendation is incomplete. We've heard a lot about noise, but there's been no noise measurement, so you don't know exactly what the impact is and what mitigation measures could be done. I'd almost rather have Murphy's Pub back there than the plan that's being presented today. The report also misrepresents an impact. There's a proposed Centerra flyover here, and that roadway is supposed to cut right through this property and right through the building that they want to place here. So, I don't think the site plan has been fully vetted against that plan. Second point is that the proposal fails to align with your comprehensive plan, the Rosemont SGA Master Plan, the Urban Forestry Plan, and other city guidelines and standards. This is just a cut-and-paste dealership. It's about a two-story glass building. It's not built to the human scale required of the urban area set forth in your plans and your guidelines. The proposal is being sold as part of the Rosemont SGA Master Plan. That's transparently disingenuous. It has nothing to do with the Rosemont District and the plans in place. It simply doesn't fit. Number three, I know it's said that these are two separate properties. Hyundai owns Genesis. Checkered Flag owns the Hyundai dealership, and they're building a Genesis dealership right next door. It's one ownership. Don't be fooled by a dotted line. Legally on paper, it might be separate. The operations will be the same. So, the bad habits I provided to you are easily predictable that they'll just move next door. So, we'll have more noise, more offloads. The plan doesn't have a place. I don't think you could drive one of the car haulers into the property design they have now. I'd like to see how you would maneuver. Instead, they use the nursing home parking lot today to turn around. They're not even in compliance with their current conditional use permit for the property next door, so we don't have any faith that that'll continue over. So, we ask to delay at very least this until they can prove that they can adhere to their current conditional use permit, as well as city code, before giving them more property. Pending your questions, that concludes my comments.
Mr. Moss?
Have you reported, or has the Civic League reported, what you perceive to be the noncompliance with the existing conditional uses on the property you just referenced, and has that been communicated to the city?
It has, but only in very short time. I haven't, this isn't my full-time job, so just researching and pulling back all the way to 1997, and then looking at the property, these are new items that have come up. Again, another reason to possibly defer, so we can figure out what's going on. But it seems pretty obvious.
Well, if you have any documentation, I'm sure the district council member, and I know I would as well, would appreciate you sending it our way to the clerk or directly, because I would like to be able to share that with the man.
Absolutely. I think it was included in the attachment I sent, a list of the conditions in the 1997 permit that I feel are in violation.
Ms. Henley?
I really should have asked the prior speaker this, but I guess I'm just kind of a little slow.
Yes, ma'am.
Were there any meetings between the community and this proposed development during the time that it was being developed, before it went to the planning commission?
Not before the planning commission, no. We had a brief meeting at the site, which was very helpful. Councilmember Balerty has been fantastic in helping us understand the problem and working with the applicant, but the time has been so short.
But before it went to the planning commission, there were no outreach meetings with the community at all?
Not that I'm aware of. Just the orange sign in the ground.
We started to have a proposal last year at this time for this kind of thing, wouldn't happen, but we kind of didn't follow through. This is an example of why that's important.
Yes, ma'am. Agreed.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sandra Scheinavarger, and then Barbara Messner.
Good evening, Acting Mayor Wilson and Virginia Beach City Council members, and thank you for serving on council. I hope you will vote to deny or delay Checkered Flag's conditional use application. The plans involve paving the very last of any fume-filtering woods in a neighborhood that has badly suffered the flooding impacts of surrounding development. This is a, well, it's now a congested, high-density area near town center where smog-preventing woods are critical, they're critical for health and for property values. My understanding is that it is illegal to violate conditional use permits. Among several items, Checkered Flag has an illegal speaker and sound system, Checkered Flag has illegal lighting, and that's according to the permit that was signed, and they agreed to buy in 1997. It's unlikely, after years of certain behavior, that that would change. This application also has some inaccurate statements within building plans, do not fit with the Rosemont SGA plans regarding building vertically, tree canopy goals, and it seems odd to me to build in a spot potentially marked for a flyover in the next decade. Page four at the bottom of their application addresses significant natural and cultural impacts. Nearly 3,000 people between two petitions feel that there are, in fact, significant natural and cultural impacts. The land itself is a natural flood mitigator. My understanding is that each mature tree absorbs roughly, or they're capable of absorbing 150 gallons a month of water. So, these woods, the three acres of the woods, I would estimate at least, you know, between 600 to 1,000 trees, I didn't count them, but they would absorb around, at least around 144,000 gallons of water a month, and that is likely why this street doesn't flood yet. Over, so over 2,200 people who ride bikes there, they feel that their community is rather culturally significant. We'd at least like a chance to meet and discuss wiser alternatives that might be better for Checkered Flag. For example, building vertically, a paved lot across the street, which is also owned by Runnymede. It's a fairly empty lot, and that's a potential spot to look at for a Genesis dealer. It's already paved, built and not being used. Building vertically, per the SGA, hasn't been explored. That would be wise to explore those possibilities. And in the interest of transparency, this is a good opportunity for council, it's just fair and honest to comment that the VPAP.org shows Checkered Flag and Runnymede have generously donated to six council members over the years. That's not illegal, although it makes, it may make some people question if it's appropriate to vote on the item. But that's, anyway. Ideally, another park is needed in this wooded location. Employees at the nearby office buildings appreciate walks on their lunch breaks. The land was mistakenly used as a park for several decades, so that kind of shows the need for that park in that spot, not 20 miles or, you know, eight miles away, but that spot. And economically, Virginia Beach would be wise to produce more athletes rather than, you know, gang members or drug addicts. Another aspect is safety. The congested area near town center needs safer places for our children to ride bikes, where they won't be hit by cars. There are a couple of times in the news, I'm almost done, sorry, where at least seven Virginia Beach children and two adults have all been in the ICU in the last decade. Those were just the ones that were reported publicly. There have been other cases of kids getting hurt. And anyway, that's, that's all I had. Thank you so much for having me.
The next speaker is Barbara Messner. After Ms. Messner is Marcus Jeffries.
Did you check on item three?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Some of the comments I was saving for item three, friend school, but this all ties in We need to preserve the land. Everything is so polluted, it's unreal. And P1, preserve, preserving, that's excellent. That should have been used for Owl's Creek. I don't, I don't know if you voted on that. I don't think you were here, Mr. Rouse, but an entire wildlife preserve has been destroyed, entire. I think it was like 70 acres. So, okay, storm drains, you know, everything's polluted. Everything's polluted. And adding, I appreciate the comment about, you know, the problems at Sandbridge, but the problems are everywhere throughout the city. We don't have proper storm drainage. That, you know, first phase, 567 million, that's not going to do anything. That's not going to do anything. You know, you can't fix something that you've already destroyed, and you can't raise roads. So, ironically, this is Runnymede, and, but yeah, there's too many car sales, too many gas stations, you know, the city's too many gas stations, you know, the city's just a mess. We have uncontrolled growth, and, you know, the comments about, oh, before I forget, the video, for the people that are sitting there, the video's only turned on for the maps when the developers come. People cannot see the speakers, and they can't see y'all eating your lunch and everything else that's going on. It's really disrespectful. And the one I wanted to speak on Friends School, it's a jet-noise-crash zone. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Messner. Next speaker is Marcus Jeffries. After Mr. Jeffries is Francisco Rodriguez.
What a day, I tell you. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, robbers and cops, bottoms and tops, and to the whole city council member, I say good evening. My name is Marcus, and when I was in middle school, I failed, I failed geometry in high school, I failed algebra. Both of those were because I was asleep in class. As I became a corpsman in the Navy slash nurse, I learned that anybody under the rank of E4 only needs three hours of sleep, because all you need to do is be able to wipe off a counter or march in a direction that you're pointed. When I left the Navy, I started my undergrad in college, and I had a little bit of money and plenty of free time. This is the first time in my adult life where I got to take a nap, and it felt good. It felt really good. As a father and a graduate student, I didn't have much free time, but I still knew that naps were a real necessity, especially with kids. Go to bed. I do not represent the Sabre Company or Centerra Healthcare Company, but I am employed by both of them. Behind the construction area, that might happen or might not, there is a hospice house, there's an assisted living facility, and a rehab facility where I work. There's 100 patients at the rehab facility, and they're doing their best job to become a little bit better in the 14 to 20 days that they're there. The 40 patients in the assisted living facility, they're just living. They're doing their assisted living each day. And in the third facility, the hospice house, people are just trying to die in peace. Please realize that anybody at this council or anybody in this room could easily need one of these facilities for care. You could get into a simple accident at home, or you could go outside and get into a car accident. Your older relative may need, may have dementia, or they need an assisted living facility so they can have a safe place where they can sleep, and you won't be worried that they'll wander outside and go into traffic. And finally, if you have a loved one that does choose the hospice option for care, they will need a good night's sleep so that they can wake up and be well-rested to go visit with their family, their friends, before they usually pass away in the middle of the night. So for all these reasons, for all the current and future patients of these facilities, I keep their patients' peace of mind, their quality of life, and hopefully a good night's sleep, I'm opposed to building in this area. All right?
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Nice to meet all y'all.
The next speaker is Francisco Rodriguez, and then Tracy Colley.
Vice Mayor and city council members, thanks for having me this evening. My name is Francisco Rodriguez. I live at 128 Presidential Boulevard. I've lived there since October of 1999. I agree with everything that Mr. Burning and Fran presented in their, in their talk this evening. I ask you to vote no for this conditional use permit for the following reasons. Residents of Windsor Woods slash Windsor Forest do not want any more commercial development adjacent to our neighborhood. Two, Hyundai already displays their high-end Genesis cars at their current facility. There's no need for another facility. They already have adapted using their current footprint. Developing the forested acreage is in direct conflict with Virginia Beach's goal of increasing the tree canopy to 45%. Currently, it's 39%, as stated in their Treetopia, the Treetopia event they had recently, posted on Virginia Beach's website. This land is one of the last pieces of old-growth forests, of undeveloped, undeveloped forests laying along I-264. Nothing can replace the lush density of this vegetation and the trees there, this acreage. Three, was it three, was it 3.22 acres? Is that it? Hundreds of birds, reptiles, amphibians, mammals live there in their self-sustaining habitat. Nothing needs to be done to, nothing needs, nothing, no resources are needed for them to live here, only rainwater and sunshine. Just leave it undisturbed. Ripping down this forest for a car dealer would destroy the backdrop of our neighborhood and severely diminish our, the curb appeal of our neighborhood and will likely lower the value of our homes. This urban forest blocks the northerly winds protecting our neighborhood. It provides a natural sound barrier, as previously stated. It absorbs rainwater, rainwater rather than draining into the various ditches and canals in the area. In closing, I state again, the residents of Windsor Woods slash Windsor Forest do not want any more commercial development adjacent to our neighborhood. Once this forest is gone, it's gone forever. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out. The next speaker is Tracy Colley. After Ms. Colley is Jarrett Hamm.
I'm so nervous. This is my first time. Thank you, everyone. I'm so honored to be here, and I want to tell you that I live.
Relax, it's okay.
Okay, I'm gonna take a deep breath. I love everything that everyone said. I'm so honored to be in front of you. First of all, I just want to show you, this is my Barney P. Fife dog, my little beagle, that got a really bad kidney infection when Hyundai tore down the woods right behind my house, and all the mice came and infected my shed. And he drank some of their pee water and died, but he's gone, but not forgotten. Okay, so, I know, I only have a little bit of time, so I want to just say, Marcus, right on, because I am a nurse. My name is Tracy Colley. I live at 121 Presidential Boulevard. I'm an RN, BSN, a CRNA. I give anesthesia, and I was so surprised today, when I got here, I was talking to the distinguished barrister that started this item seven, and he was, he's been trying to get me to go home since I got here. He's like, oh, it's gonna be so long, you better go home, it's just gonna be nine o'clock, you just might as well leave. And then, all of a sudden, at this time, look, I'm already up here. Like, whatever, dude. Okay, so I love birds, too. Look, I have bird feeders in my backyard. I have a male-female cardinal. They live in the tree right outside my bedroom, and they wake me up every morning. Besides my pit bull, who wakes up every morning shaking its tail against my thing, the cardinals are waking me up going, the seeds are empty, the seeds are empty, the seeds are empty, the seeds are empty. So that's, that's what I love about that. Besides missing my Barney, I know, I've seen mouse, I've spent tons of money on extinguishers to get rid of the mice that have come from there. Okay, so, yeah, the high-end Genesis cars, blah, 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 I'm gonna go back. The birds, I just keep going back to the birds. Yeah, building vertically, whatever. Listen, there's not that much room between the I-264 and where I live right now. I want to show you, can I show you where I live? It's so close. Every, okay, so I'm a nurse, a nurse instructor, and we rotate shifts, we have to do 12-hour shifts, it's really hard these days, and they're taking my students into the hospital to work with these, you know, just helping them turn. We have turn teams that go and just turn patients. Okay, so, on the other side of sleep is strength. That's what I tell my students, like, you gotta get a good night's sleep. So I go home, and at 4:00 every Tuesday and Thursday, the...
I'm so sorry, but we've got to be fair to everybody. Your time is...
It's up?
Yes, ma'am. The little light stopped.
The light stopped? Oh, my gosh. Can I say anything else? Like, please, don't. I, again, I'm against it. Don't.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, goodbye. The next speaker is Jarrett Hamm.
Bye, y'all.
After Mr. Hamm, give me just a second. It's Russell, Russell Schinabarger.
Good evening, city council. Pleasure to be here, pleasure to speak to you. I'm a voter in Virginia Beach. I'm a life, I've lived here all my life. I voted for most of all of you, and I'm here to ask for your denial for this permit. And we're in a worldwide car shortage. Have you driven down 264, gotten off at Rosemont Road, and looked to the right at the Checkered Flag dealer? They have no cars. Their lot's empty. They don't need another, they don't need another dealership. They have six dealerships in Virginia Beach already. They're, all the lots are empty. The Genesis, they don't have any chips for the Genesis. So we shouldn't even be talking about this till at least 2024, when all the lots get filled back up, and they're gonna need another spot for another car dealer. I'm gonna make a couple of points. Francisco and Sandra made really great points, so I don't need, really need to bring those up again. Cars are still gonna be unloaded along Centerra Way, blocking the road, making a bunch of noise, you know. The environmental impacts you brought up are phenomenal. I mean, that's, I mean, great point, great point. And I'm a huge fan of you. I'm a huge fan. What else? This is the last, this is the last undisturbed parcel in Windsor Woods, period. I grew up on Starlighter Drive. I grew up in Windsor Woods from 1978 to 2001, moved to Chesapeake, and I'm back in Thalia now. I know this area better than most people. I used to ride my bike back there, before there was Presidential Boulevard, before the Centerra, before, that was all woods in 1991, when I was a 13-year-old kid. I used to ride the trails all through there. I went to Windsor Woods Elementary. I mean, I know this area. So this being the last wooded area in Windsor Woods, I'd like to keep it that way, if that's possible. So, I mean, Winners LLC has donated a lot of money to several of y'all's campaigns. So as soon as I saw that, I was like, it's a lose-lose, we're gonna lose. They're gonna vote it because they were donating, winners gave money to their campaigns. He gave $5,000 to Mayor Dyer's campaign. I don't know when that was, but it's, it's in there, Freedom of Information Act, it's there. So I'm just hoping for a denial, I'm hoping for a couple red lights, a couple, please. Thank you very much. Have a great night. It's cool, real cool to talk to y'all. See ya.
The next speaker is Russell Schinabarger. After Mr. Schinabarger is Arthur Turecki.
Good evening, members of city council. My name's also Schinabarger, and I'm just coming here to ask you guys to deny the conditional use permit for Winners' properties for the Genesis dealership. More or less, it's just about being a good neighbor, and from what I've seen from this dealership, I live over in Plaza, I've shopped at the dealership several times looking for cars, they're just not a good neighbor, starting first and foremost with the lights. I mean, if you don't know your dealership is casting lights on somebody's backyard, keeping them up at night, I mean, you don't know what you're doing with your business. I don't see why we should be warning a car company that's, or a car business that's a bad neighbor with another dealership where they could potentially do the same things, have the same habits. The lights they have, they're 14 feet tall, they're over code, you know, they're LED. They need to be, they need to have the shield on them. By the reaction of the zoning, the zoning meeting, the gentleman that was representing them wasn't aware of some of these concerns with the lighting, with the noise, the outside PAs, some of the problems they have as well. Was the cars unloading on the, on Centerra Way? I've been there when I was shopping the other time, they were unloading on the street. Imagine if an emergency vehicle had to go down to the assisted living center at the end of the street while they're trying to do that. What gives them the right to sit there and pull the ride away and unload their cars there? They should have the facility onboard inside of the dealership. Looking at the picture again, I'm of the proposed plans, I'm no architect, but I don't know how you can back a truck or put a truck in there, unload the cars on their facility there, and take it back out without interrupting traffic in some sort of way. You know, for right now, they are also going down to the end of the road to turn around inside of Centerra, not Centerra, but the, this is the living center. They're turning the trucks around in there. That's being a bad neighbor to them as well. They're not showing respect for the neighborhoods. The employees are parking on the streets, employees leaving the trash on the streets. There's dealership trash on the street for itself, and the noise from the PA systems impacting it. I would hate to live right next door to it, hearing that as well. I would hate for the light to come into my house, too. I'm sure if you guys had a situation like that, you'd also be upset with it as well. So we ask that you, you know, deny this or put an end to it here, postpone this here, but this is something that we're not in support of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, your son's a real trooper.
He is.
He's cute, too. The next speaker is Arthur Turecki.
Three hours.
And then Eve Turecki.
Good evening. How's everybody doing? Here speaking on behalf of the Rose Hall District, we do not want this property to be built. Currently, I get woken up at night, you know, 1:00, 2:00 in the morning, when I gotta be up at 5:00 in the morning at work at 6:00, you know, because of the PA system is going off, you know, and this has been an issue since the dealership was renovated. The attorney for them, for Winners LLC, said back in 2013, I think the main issue started developing around 2016, when it was converted from Drivers World, which it was previously, to Checkered Flag. So I can only speak on behalf of, you know, being woken up at night, having truck drivers pull out their cars, you know, or even park behind my house late at night, you know, and just keep me up because they can't turn off their vehicle because their airlift system will go out on the semi. So, I mean, you know, I can only do so much, you know, so, and that's numerous calls to the non, to the police department, the non, non-emergency number, you know, and calling them, and then, you know, nobody comes there, you know, nobody goes there to check it out, to tell them to leave or anything. I gotta go outside, you know, 2:00 in the morning, I gotta tell them, hey, get out of here, you know, you're keeping all these neighbors awake, you know, your semi truck is loud, you know, and that's just the semis. That's not the PA system that goes on random hours at night. I mean, getting rid of all this tree canopy, I mean, you got trees that are 80, 100 feet tall, you know, how long is it gonna take to get all those trees, the three acres? From what I see from that property, I mean, what would you say, maybe 95% of the land is gonna be covered in concrete? That means you're gonna be left with .3 acres. I mean, that's gonna get rid of all the wildlife that's back there, the birds, rabbits, squirrels, foxes, whatever, you know, and that's gonna eliminate all the birds additionally, because I like to see birds, you know, flying into my yard, you know, eating the figs off my tree. That's gonna be gone, you know, and now I have to deal with a nuisance neighbor, you know, I mean, I'm sure you guys don't appreciate it, you know, you get that one neighbor that moves in, next thing you know, he has all of his trash on his front property, you know, doesn't want to get rid of it, city comes by five times, he moves it, and then he puts it back out front. You know, it's, it's never gonna get resolved this way, you know, unless we either postpone this decision or decline it completely. So, and I haven't even talked about water mitigation, because I don't even think the water mitigation's gonna solve anything. How do you know that's exactly what you need? I mean, you're gonna be flooding all the way from Bonnie Road, which is on the opposite side of the interstate, you know, because of all that stormwater drain connects, and all the current land, that's not flooding because of those trees being there. So I want you guys to vote against this, or I highly suggest, if you could, vote against this, so.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
You're very cheerful.
Try to be.
The next speaker is Eve Turecki. The next speaker is Eve Turecki. And then Robert Plomary.
Good evening to everybody. My name is Eve Turecki. I live at 125 Presidential Boulevard, right across from the woods. And why I built a house over there? Because it was a quiet, nice neighborhood. And I choose this lot because I saw the woods. The lungs for the, for me, for my family, for the people, for the neighborhood. But right now, the Checkered Flag, Genesis wanted to destroy this. Not, I won't talk about the habitat and the birds and all different wild animals who live in these woods, but destroying, you know, the woods and the oxygen for the people and destroying the, destroying the view for the people who live over there and who, they're going to see only the concrete. And like the person before said, the 264, and we cannot do nothing about it. Yes, we can do. If we're going to oppose this, then we still can see the woods. And everybody, you know, right now, the people from the Checkered Flag, they, they always, they park their cars behind our, our, by our house and make, during the day, they eat the lunches. They make the trash leaving on our grass. Of course, the city, once in a while, they are coming, cleaning. But my husband, my, my son, they are, you know, going over there and cleaning this trash. Also, the trucks, the dumping trucks, then everything, the, the sound alarm going through the night. You cannot really sleep over there. You don't wish to live over there if you're going to have another company like that. I'm opposed to this building. Thank you so much. And one more thing, because I forgot. I didn't come for the first meeting of the council here because we received the letter a week before the meeting. And I had already scheduled a travel someplace else, and I couldn't attend. Why they didn't notice us about this before? And only three families get the letter? Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Robert Plomary. And then Diana Howard.
Hello, first time I ever did this too. Thanks for having us. I'd like to say there was a couple of issues that were brought up. One, somebody says something about turning around a tractor-trailer. I was a car transporter, okay? No, you cannot. It can't be done. It is done, by the way, I live at 137 Presidential. The home that they're talking about, that's behind my house. The tractor-trailers pull behind my house all the time to turn around. You cannot do it on the road. I also own an F-450 that's as big as an ambulance. If you come down Centerra Way during the day, nobody's getting past me. And I'm not getting past anybody else. All the time, emergency vehicles are coming down that road, going to the hospice and going to the assisted living back there, every day. If somebody's coming down that road, they're not getting through. They want to bring in more traffic? These are employees from, from the car dealer that's already there, that are parking on that street. You want to bring in more? There is no more parking on there. There's a car sitting in front of a fire, a fire hydrant right now that's been there for four days. Somebody mentioned the leaves being blown into the street. The drains, the DI's, I used to be a concrete guy. The DI drainage, they're full of leaves. There's about that much space where water's going down them. Nobody's cleaning them out, nobody's taking care of them. You mentioned birds. We, we listen to the hawks all the time. We hear them flying around over there, we see them flying around. A fox walks by my house nightly, every night on his way home like he's going home from work. He stops off in front of my house, looks at us, my wife sits out on the front porch every night. He looks at her and goes on his merry way and goes up between Arthur and his family's home. And he goes home. These are all, all my neighbors, and we all feel the same way. There is no way that this is a good idea, not at all. The noise, I can hear, I'm probably four houses away from the existing car dealership. I hear their alarm system, come on. No matter what it is, it could be a raccoon. And this thing comes on, warning people in probably, you know, Princess Anne Plaza, that, you know, you're being recorded. And, you know, you should stop and assist. And that, these, Arthur and his family have to hear this every night. Tracy hears this every night. These people, Franco Heath lives across the street and he hears it. This, there's no good, nothing good can come from this. They're not, haven't been good neighbors, they won't be good neighbors. And I've probably been the person who has lived in this neighborhood the least. I've only been there for four or five years, but I know all of this. I've witnessed all of it, I've witnessed these trucks coming down there. I, for one, if you pull up at a dealership early, or somewhere where you're delivering early, you stay the night. These trucks, it's winter time, they run for heat. If it's summertime, they run for AC. They don't shut them down, and they park right there on the street, right behind their houses, or worse yet, in the parking lot of the, of the assisted living. Deny it, deny it with everything. It is not a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out.
The next speaker is Diana Howard. After Ms. Howard is William Jennings.
Hi, welcome back. Well, you know, I'm for property rights and, you know, people should be able to do what they want with their property as long as they comply with the zoning and the, you know, the conditional use permits and everything to be a good neighbor. But as you heard, right, these people are not complying with that, and they're not being a good neighbor. So what about the property rights of everybody that lives around where, you know, they want to build this here? What about their property rights? We spend a lot of money for economic development, helping all these businesses, right, down at the oceanfront and everything. How much would it cost to use open space money and buy that piece of land? Those three and a half acres, right? So that we can have, you know, the stormwater capacity of those trees? And the kids can play at the bike path and that are there. I remember my son used to play at the bike path in the woods behind Windsor Oaks Elementary School. And he used to just love that, right? And kids need a safe place to be riding their bikes in the neighborhood. So as you heard from everybody here, you know, they've given you all the reasons that you should at least delay, if not disapprove of this, right? And, what was the other thing I was going to say? And there was that one where it doesn't comply with the SGA. The SGA for that area says that we were supposed to move away from car dealerships there, right? And there's supposed to be a flyover. So that was another reason. So please, at least delay it to get with the community and hear their concerns and everything before approving this, or consider buying that piece of land. I don't know if they've already bought that piece of land to expand there or not, right? But if they haven't, that would be the opportunity right now to be able to use their open space money to buy that piece of land. That would be great, thanks.
Thank you.
William Jennings. William Jennings. Lisa Clarkson. Oh, are you Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Thank you. No, you're fine. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is William Jennings. I live in Windsor Woods. During Hurricane Matthew, my home flooded. And I'm concerned about the flooding. If you could put the picture back up of the aerial view? Oh, sorry, the aerial view? Behind that, between the interstate and that property, that is a canal there that goes all the way back to Lake Windsor. Goes underneath Southern Boulevard there and Lake Windsor. This property being wooded absorbs a lot of water. And any, if it doesn't absorb the water now, then it's going to go into the canal there that goes all the way back to Lake Windsor. That's going to add additional water. And I'm hoping that, because we're talking about getting pumps and floodgates and all that, I'd like to have that occur before, you know, this was developed. And the, so I'm concerned about the floodwater runoff. And I know that they have in the diagram a BMP or a retention pond on that side in their proposal. However, the BMP is usually full of water up to where the overflow is, because they're trying to capture all the phosphates and other chemicals and let it settle when it runs off. So that's not going to be the retention of that water. That water's going to have to go somewhere. And I'm not sure that's been completely addressed. What I find is interesting though is that I get lots of emails from, or not emails, but mail from Checkered Flags and all that. One of my neighbors has worked for Checkered Flag forever, dear lady. But I didn't get anything this time to let me know that they were going to develop something in our neighborhood. And I would like the opportunity, as the others have said, to meet with them and discuss it. Maybe there's a compromise, maybe there's some other area that they could leave partially wooded or something that might, the whole neighborhood might be able to figure something out if we could work together. But I would like the opportunity to do that. I didn't know about this until later on. I am concerned about the stormwater, because when we talk to the engineers or people at Oldhamin University, talk about, well, people keep developing undeveloped raw land, and when they do, the water has to go somewhere. And so I know we've spent a lot of money, and going to spend more money, to try to help save our city. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Lisa Clarkson. Okay, thank you. We'll move to WebEx speakers now. The first WebEx speaker is Kim Mayo. Ms. Mayo, if you will pause two to three seconds before beginning, you are unmuted.
Hi, everyone, Kim Mayo. This land was made for you and me. Because it was made for us, it's up to us to preserve it. I oppose this project as proposed. Concerns about light pollution, noise, removal of trees, and now mice and rats. We heard from the woman about mice wearing the Penn State sweatshirt. Infestation of nearby properties of mice and rats during construction is a common and well-known problem. And it's typical for businesses doing construction in cities to have to reimburse neighboring residential properties for the costs associated with such infestations. Property rights allow a lot of things, but that doesn't mean what's being built has to be so destructive and out of scale. Why not build a car lot in a sensible way? A multi-story parking garage instead of a sprawling paved parking lot? While I'm not a resident of this neighborhood, my tax dollars and the money of our citizens and property owners through increased property taxes have been earmarked for flood protection. And we all recognize that existing trees provide this protection. They're recognized for their importance in managing runoff, and their leaf canopies help reduce erosion caused by falling rain. They also provide surface area where rainwater lands and evaporates, and the roots take up the water to mitigate flooding. So stop chopping them down for unwanted developments. A tree that looks at God all day and lifts her heavy arms to pray. A tree that may in summer wear a nest of robins in her hair. Why can't the city find funding to keep these woods? These woods are home to different species of birds, protector of our health and protection from floods. People like me who have never engaged in politics until this year are taking notice of your votes, which will be counted with the new system. City Council, thank you for your consideration tonight. The public is following unwanted developments more closely than ever. We hope you will vote this down, or at least defer it as residents' request. This is truly in the best interest of Virginia Beach. Thank you.
The next WebEx speaker is Dana Collins. Ms. Collins, if you'll pause two to three seconds before beginning, you are unmuted.
Okay, good evening, City Council. Mr. Duhany, the IT staff who's helping us connect tonight. My name is Dana Cullen, local history author, curator of the Vintage North End Archive, which focuses on protecting nature and culture. Thank you for the opportunity to have my voice heard, Councilwoman, even though I cannot join you in person in chambers. Your accommodating remote speakers are very much appreciated now and hopefully far into the future of this information age. Councilman Rouse, I applaud you for mentioning the red-tailed hawk concern connected to developing this property. When I spoke to one of the leaders of the BMX community, he confirmed that there is a red-tailed hawk nest on the property, it's well documented, and raptors are protected under the Federal Migratory Bird Treaty Act in Virginia. I'm here to humbly ask you and the rest of City Council to please deny the request, or at least defer the vote, to allow a car lot to be built on the last significant piece of old-growth Windsor Woods property. Property it took 150 to 500 years to develop. Please, allow some extra time to investigate the hawk concern, and also how flooding will be impacted, and how local youth street culture will be devastated by the loss of several acres of this old-growth forest next to a neighborhood that is experiencing ever-increasing flooding pressure over the past few years. Please consider saving the last drop of these woods that we have next to a tightly-built, dense neighborhood packed full of families and kids, many of whom have been benefiting from this little pocket of green for generations. Yet athletes, young athletes, fathers and sons have enjoyed Windsor Woods, also known as Thrashmore Park, and bonded and developed their skills. They form lifelong, multi-generational social bonds in the neighborhood underneath this lush, green, centuries-old canopy of priceless, irreplaceable old-growth trees. An emerald cathedral of sorts, a woods that has been spawning a serious state, national, and now an Olympic-level athlete. Honed their skills, experience that have benefited them for a lifetime. This sort of experience is priceless for boosting the morale of our local, younger, 2,200-member BMX youth culture and their families, as it impacts them all in part. Not every kid gets along with high school sports programs or can afford to participate in private sports programs. We all know the benefits. Why not keep this opportunity available for kids who don't fit in other programs? Dominant, when I was younger, there was a, there was a culture there of skaters, and it has developed into this BMX culture. This past August in 2021, BMX hero Justin Dowell, regular visitor of Thrashmore Park, finished eighth in the Tokyo Olympics after honing his skills for years on those mud tracks in that park, many of them built with the help from his father. This sort of street athlete culture that has been developing successfully in these woods for all of this time, we need to, we need to preserve it. A previous speaker noted that Virginia Beach needs to produce more athletes and less drug addicts. I was told that BMX athletes brought plane tickets to visit this park. Who's going to buy a plane ticket to visit a car dealership? Here in the North End, we kids grew up running around in seashore state parks. Kids, kids need those nooks and crannies to grow. Kids need woods. Weren't you ever a kid in the woods once? Let's breathe in more fresh air and send less people to the hospital for cancer caused by toxic emissions that go unabsorbed. If we cut down this thick buffer of trees, where are the BMX guys tonight? Have they been silenced? Is there an elephant in the forest? Let's start detoxing Virginia Beach right here with this vote tonight. You have a natural pump station of sorts built by Mother Nature. What would it cost to build one? Is it multi-use?
Thank you. Mr. Garrington, would you like for rebuttal?
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
There's not enough time left in the evening for me to rebut everything that everybody has said. But I will just like to make a couple of highlight points. I have heard two or three people say, we don't want any more commercial development in our property, in our neighborhood. It's already there. It's been commercial for several years, and there's a site plan that has already been submitted, reviewed, and approved by the city agency to build a commercial building on that piece of property. It's just not the building that we're asking for. It is two separate sites. I know it's the same owner, but it's two separate sites. There's a property line that goes between the two of them. We're not asking for a rezoning, we are asking for a conditional use permit where you put conditions on a piece of property to make sure that it is at least compatible with the adjoining property. We've got 12 conditions now, the 13, with 13, with the one that Mr. Rouse has added to it. We've done everything we can do on this piece of property. We have some issues on the existing property that I will again tell Mr. Bernig and everybody that's listening. Make a list, give it to us, let us see what we can do through management to take care of some of those issues that are there. But they don't transfer over to this piece of property, even though it's the same owner. And we will see if we can't get as many of them taken care of as possible. And that's all I can tell you, that's the only thing I can tell you that we'll do. That's the only thing I can tell you that we'll do. That's the request that you have in front of you tonight. And again, I apologize for putting you in the position of referee, but unfortunately, that's the way this system works. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Henley.
You say there's an approved site plan on this property?
Yes, ma'am.
Was that approved with the current, the new stormwater regulations?
Exactly. It's just been approved in the last two years. We met with your Development Services Center back in September, okay? And site plan was approved on the property for an office building. We met with Development Services Center back in September to make sure if we changed the use of it and went to a car dealership as opposed to an office building, would it be okay? And Mr. Frink and his staff said, yes, it would be okay, that you could still use the same engineering on the site plan as long as you didn't change the amount of impervious cover on the property, and that's what we were doing.
So you had all of that impervious cover?
That's correct.
That you have on that?
That's correct. It was done by Bob Miller, MSA, before Bob Miller passed away. Yes, sir, Mr. Moss.
My question's a little bit different because I understand, I'm trying to make sure I get in the right legal lane. There is an SGA, long-range plan for this property, and the people have pointed out that the property used in question isn't in compliance with that. So what now I'm asking is, what is the added value from the perspective of the applicant for the condition, realizing you have some entitlement already with the property, but you're not here? You wouldn't be here if you were exercising the entitlement. So clearly, the marketplace makes this a much more profitable for the landowner, or we'd be talking about, you wouldn't be here. So since you are having an added value proposition, what is that to the public such that the SGA intention should be ignored in order to grant your conditional use permit?
Well, that's just, that's a tough question to answer.
That's why I'm asking it.
I don't know that I have the perfect answer for that, so I'll just say that, again, your staff has looked at it, and they're looking at it from the same thing. They have given it their approval. Planning Commission's given it their approval, and that's what we're here for tonight, to ask for the final approval that we need, and that's from this body here.
I appreciate your candidness.
Yeah, I mean, I could manufacture something, but that's all it would be.
I appreciate your candor.
I think the planning director wanted to clarify.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Don.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. So Mr. Garrington is correct. The site does have a previously approved site plan that was approved under the, under the previous state stormwater regulations. So it is a grandfathered site. It is, it does have its necessary site plan approvals, but under the old regulations.
And if we had submitted our ENS bonds, we could be out there knocking the trees down right now. That would not be in our best interest because until we know that we can build what we want to build, the property is under contract, but we will close on it once we get the conditional use permit.
I have a question for staff when the appropriate time after motion's been made. Then I'll ask it.
Sure, Mr. Jones.
What was the site plan approved for?
For an office building, two-story office building.
Mr. Luji.
Thank you. I don't have any questions for you at this time, Mr. Garrington. Madam Vice Mayor, at this time, I move, I would like to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit. And upon receipt of a second, I would like to explain the logic that I used to make this recommendation.
A second, Mr. Malucci.
Thank you. Well, I would like to begin first by thanking all of my neighbors who came to share your perspective and your thoughts with this body and with the public this evening. And I thank you for your time. I thank you for sharing your experiences, and I thank you for sharing your perspective, not only with me, but with the council. I know you have a lot of other things that you could be doing tonight, and I respect that you chose to be here. I want to thank the members of the Princess Anne Plaza Civic League for the position that you've taken and for your consideration of the application. And I want to share with each of you and also with this body, as you consider the decision you make tonight, that this isn't a hypothetical conceptual issue for me. I live in this neighborhood. So the decision that we make here tonight not only affects the community of folks who are here with us tonight, but it affects me and my family also directly. Admittedly, though, I don't live as close to the parcel at question as many of you who are here do. So with that qualification, I do want to say I live extremely close, and it has a direct personal impact on me and my family as well. One of the most difficult parts of the job of being a council member, particularly one for a district that I've discovered, is land use questions because they're complex and they're legal. And sometimes the choices we have before us, we find are less than ideal. And I feel that this is a case study of that dilemma that we face as council members, that we ultimately face as a community when we consider decisions like this. Because the choice before us isn't whether or not to maintain the parcel as it stands today and that we know it to be, the old-growth wooded lot, or the car dealership, or another use. The choice before us is whether or not to approve a conditional use permit for a car dealership, or to subject this parcel to byright development that could potentially have a greater impact than the proposal would have. And that's the basis of the analysis that I used to arrive at this conclusion. I did hear from many neighbors, I didn't hear from all of you, if I haven't had a chance to meet each and every one of you. I wish I had. And I would like to extend a very warm and genuine invitation to do so, maybe even in a, maybe even in the neighborhood, hopefully soon on a nice day, or at a Civic League meeting, or any other time and place of your choosing. I would consider it a great honor. But the concerns that I did hear from the folks who I did talk to, who were numerous, were centered around a few things. One was the preservation of trees and the forest. Another was the impact of flooding on our neighborhood, and the concerns about flooding, of course, are well-known. We heard about light trespass, concern about lights. Heard about traffic and just general impact of the activity that the, this intersection of B-2 zoning and residential zoning can, can have. And we also heard about noise, not only from the car dealership, but noise from 264. So if the council will indulge me, I'd like to, and community, I'd like to go through each of those in just, just a little detail. First, beginning with trees, I think it's noted that by right, the property owner can destroy all the trees on the property. They can destroy more trees than the plan that's submitted before us today. That's, that's, that's a matter of zoning by right, and I'm going to go through that in a little bit greater detail in just a moment. As it relates to flooding, our city has the most strongest stormwater regulations in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And you can see there's a BMP included on this proposal, which will collect all stormwater runoff and then disperse it gradually over time, and also improve the water quality of the runoff. Not as good as trees, I will admit, but that may, as I, as I pointed out earlier, that may not be the choice that's before us today. There's a condition included that requires that the applicant direct light away from the homes and onto the property. And there is an inclusion of some buffer to abate noise. But the fact of the matter is, I don't have to tell you, there's a constant noise that comes from 264. And I wish that there were some type of abatement, and there may be that one that we could explore. But, but to deny or delay this application on the basis to, of the impact that noise would have, would be disingenuous because the fact is, we could be in a worse position in a byright development. I'd also like to just to talk about the distinction between what a B-2 zoning could allow and what's being proposed today. So just a quick list, a B-2 zoning by right could include a liquor store, a commercial parking lot, a telecom facility, a drugstore, restaurant with the drive-through, a funeral home, a furniture upholstery repair shop, a greenhouse, a grocery store, laundry dry cleaning facility, commercial printer, also a utility substation. Each of these uses would be arguably less compatible with our neighborhood than the proposal that has come before us. And I would be concerned about the impact that they would have, that they would have on our neighborhood. I'm concerned about also the fact that Centerra Way, in addition to being the ingress and egress for the hospice care and rehab facility, is a place where frankly, and I thank Mr. Berning for pointing this out, there's, there's some activity that's happening on Centerra Way that I think has been exacerbated by the fact that this lot has been present. And I think each of you who live adjacent to that know about that. Abandoned vehicles, homelessness encampments, dumping of trash on the Presidential Canal, and even in and around Centerra Way. And as soon as these items were brought to my attention by Mr. Berning, the city responded, and I credit Mr. Duhany and as well the Police Department with their swift action in seeking remedy for, for this activity. But I actually am concerned that, that the lack of activity on Centerra Way has contributed to this condition of abandoned vehicles, potential for criminal behavior, and other We have a recommendation for approval by staff. We have a recommendation for approval by planning. But at the end of the day, what it boils down to this is, I genuinely believe, and I've done my best to give this a dispassionate and objective analysis, I genuinely believe that the development that we will see on this site will be, cause more light trespass, more traffic, more noise, and more disruption in our lives. I recognize that there may be disagreement on this body, and I, obviously, there's disagreement in the community. But what I hope that we are able to walk away from today is that you have confidence that I have done my very best to objectively analyze the situation and, and to do the best thing as I believe it for our community. Because if we deny this application, a byright development will be more impactful to our neighborhood than not approving the application that's before us. And I do genuinely believe that. Now, with the matter of Hyundai World, I have spoken to representatives from Checkered Flag, and I have received assurances that they will work with us in good faith to make improvements on all of the concerns we have. And I want to address some of those directly as well. There are lights on the Hyundai dealership that, in my opinion, should be redirected, and that will reduce light trespass on our neighborhood. And I, and I am confident those corrections can be made. I do have a concern about amplified sound, but for our council's benefit, I want you to know there's a distinction. When you think of amplified sound as a dealership, you may be thinking of paging Mr. Smith, please come to the cashier's office. That's not the type of amplified sound that's occurring at this dealership. The amplified sound that's being referenced in this case is about a security system. If a deer, or a rabbit, or, or a young person is running, is running or making their way through the dealership, there's a security system that is activated. I do think that security system likely is in violation of the conditional use permit for operation of the Hyundai dealership. I'm not in a position actually to evaluate that at this time, but it's something that we're going to look into, and it's something I've received a commitment from Checkered Flag about operating in good faith to make these adjustments that will have substantial improvements for our neighborhood. And finally, I want to address the matter of loading and unloading vehicles on the street. Frankly, and, and this is a message I want to deliver as passionately as I possibly can to all car dealerships in Virginia Beach, it is not legal to load or unload vehicles in the public right of way. It is not legal to do so. And our code enforcement and our Police Department will be active in seeking enforcement when we find that to be occurring, including on Centerra Way. There are complications with this. For example, the car manufacturers have contracts with the, with the delivery trucks. And oftentimes, drivers have never, not only been to that dealership, they may never have even visited Virginia Beach before. And so it's really going to be up to the management practices of Hyundai and Genesis to make sure this enforcement is active. And, and I have confidence that they will do that, based on the conversations that I've had. And if they don't, then it's a conversation we're going to have as a body and as a community, as a council, to ensure that enforcement is more aggressively activated. It's a concern I have. It's not legal. It's a disruption to our lives, and it's not appropriate, and it needs to stop. And so all of that said, I recognize that this is a very difficult decision. But again, as I pointed out, my fear is that we'll be in a worse position in a byright development with less trees, more light, more noise, greater impact on our lives, and that's the basis for my recommendation tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Rouse?
Thank you. Vice Mayor, we'll say. I think, with respect to the district representative, and all due respect, I just have a different view. I think these, these decisions are all about balance, and they are incredibly hard. And as someone who grew up in the historic Sea-Tac area, we've seen more than our fair share of byright developments. And I think this is why it was so important for us to have a process where we walk in line with the community. I think that was something Councilmember Henley and I were trying to get done, this process of, of meeting with the community, walking hand in step so we can understand whether the profits will be or certain type of conditions going forth. So I think that's something we really need to get in place, and rather quickly, because as Councilmember Malucci stated, it is a byright development, so I understand that aspect. But, but I also understand as well as, as the community, hearing, hearing from you tonight. And although it may not change the outcome, what I did hear is to ask for more time. As I heard, ask for a deferment, or ask for time because a proper notification wasn't, wasn't given, or proper notification was given, but not enough time was given, excuse me. Just wanted to make sure I clear that up. And so in that aspect of it, I think meeting our neighbors halfway is, is to me a responsibility to where, and that's not to say the district rep is not handling its responsibility. Again, I don't want anything to be miscreant of what I'm saying. What I'm saying is trying to meet our neighbors halfway so we have an understanding of what actually takes place when you have this type of development that's, that's coming forth. With that being said, this is something I can't support because I just have this lingering question in my head because I too am a native of, of this great city. And the question I just keep having is, is, is what would Windsor be, what is Windsor Woods without the woods? So I can't get over that. So yeah, I'm a no vote for this. Thank you.
Mr. Moss?
Well, you know, I never voted for SGAs. Anybody here knows why, because I often said that I thought SGAs were an artificial construct which had no relationship to the marketplace. But it was somewhat disappointing when the staff itself, who has been the proponent of SGAs, were so willing to abandon it in their recommendations, only validating my initial assessment that they really don't have any meaning and they're irrelevant given market conditions. So I do applaud them for at least validating my initial arguments made many years ago. Because I think often when we make these kind of decisions, we often are admitting that we're willing to let ourselves say, because I could do this worst thing that you already gave me, that you should now let me do this other thing, neither, neither of which are really what you want. And so you can do one thing and say, because if they were, if those things were more profitable, that's what we would be getting. But we all know what the marketplace is like for B-2. All those uses are declining demands across the country. And that's why we see B-2 going to residential, B-2 going to lots of other things. There's a signal there. So then you have to ask yourself is, well, then why are we willing? So then you have to ask yourself is, well then, why are we willing to let ourselves make a decision because we fear what we could get by right? And it could be worse. Maybe that's, these people would prefer that versus what they're getting. I don't know. But I kind of hear they're saying we definitely, that might be better. It's speculative whether it is or isn't, but when we move to the point of saying, well, we'll give you this, we're really saying, oh, well, that SGA plan really didn't mean anything. Because when we had the option to stick with what we already approved and maybe shouldn't have, but we're willing to augment that, then we really should go back and say, well, the SGA doesn't mean much, which is a point I've always made because it's not predicated on what the marketplace will fund. And we can't subsidize SGA's everywhere. We don't have that much money. And that's in the end what SGA's require is tremendous, tremendous public subsidies to build the what? The parking decks that no one can build to take advantage of the density that the SGA's prescribe and make it marketably work. Because that's why every place you try to get density, they want us to do what? Build the parking. Or private sector won't support it. So I think on all these logics when we get there, are we sending the right signal in rewarding with the conditional use permit? My view, the answer is no. I respect the district council members. He has to live with that choice more than I have to live with on a new system, but I'm concerned with the aggregate signal that we're sending to the larger development across the city that we aren't going to, we're always going to say, well, this is not as bad, you know? And so we're going to, we don't do that with our kids at home. I don't think. I certainly did not. So at some point, you have to eat a bad decision to keep bad behavior from happening. And I think this is the case where maybe the by right use could be worse, and it might be.
Will be.
Well, you can say that, but we don't know for certain. It's still a guess, but I, probability is probably maybe yes. But is the signal that you're sending to the larger marketplace worth it? It's like companies that never make you one offer for a liability claim, but if you don't take it, they litigate all the way as far as they can to make it expensive not to do the right thing. Here, maybe we need to be thinking about what's the signal we want to send. And I just came to a different conclusion, but I respected the conclusions you came from. But I think it does send a fundamental decision about the validity of the SGA itself for that area.
Ms. Henley?
I just want to make a couple of points. This would have been a very prime piece of property to purchase for open space. And council, if you remember about eight hours ago when we were talking about recreation centers, I made the point that we had had a tremendously good open space program that sort of now is out of money and that we need to rejuvenate it and go back to purchasing properties for open space. Unfortunately, not only do we not have any open space money, but you have to do that before there's a contract on a property. So this property is probably past that point when we could consider it for an open space purchase, and that's truly unfortunate. But there's another thing that we also tried, and Mr. Rouse just made a reference to that. A year ago, we did begin to recognize that we need a process for dealing with these infill properties and redevelopment. And that would have required the developer to have met with the community early on before it went to the planning commission or the council to try to work out some of these issues with these difficult properties that are going to impact the properties directly around them. Some of the things that have been mentioned here tonight could have been addressed, I think. I think a 25-foot buffer over part of one side is just not enough. I think it could have been much better, could be much better. I'm concerned that the, we do have the strongest flooding regulations now, but this is a grandfathered site plan that was approved under the old regulations, so that means to me that it hasn't had to meet the highest standards. And if this is approved, that site plan was approved for office, office won't have a lot of those problems that some of the people spoke about. So I really think it would help so much if this could go back to the community, even at this late date, to see if there aren't some things that could be done that could help the situation. It's unfortunate, and I know I've had some experience with having a condition that says the lights are going to be directed away from the adjoining residential property, but that doesn't happen either. You have to realize that there's only so much that that can do. I've been down that road. I hope we might be having a new lighting program, but this sounds like it might be already approved. I just feel like even at this late date, it would be an advantage if there were time to meet with the neighbors and see if it could clean it up a bit. And I think it really does point to some of the problems that we could prevent going into the future if we particularly look again, dig out that proposal that we had for infill development and make it a process and also do some other things. But I'm just really concerned that once we approve this, it's just too late.
Mr. Bellucci?
Well, Madam Vice Mayor, I think based on the conversations that we've had now and upon further reflection of the issues that have been raised by the community, I do think it would be appropriate to move for a deferral.
Indefinite?
Second.
Indefinite?
No, a 60-day deferral.
I second.
That we could have a chance to work through some of these issues, get the community some greater assurances that they're seeking.
So you're changing your motion?
Oh, well, I would withdraw my motion.
Withdraw your motion. Is that okay with the second of the motion?
Yeah.
Well, that was Mr. Holcomb.
Yeah, I support Councilwoman Bellucci.
So you want to make a new motion?
I do. I would like to make a motion to defer for 60 days, such time that we could work with the Civic League, work with members of the community to address some of these concerns. It doesn't change my analysis that a by right development will have a greater detrimental impact to our neighborhood, and I stand by the conclusions that I make in that regard. I'm concerned about all of those things. I think all of those issues are going to be worse under a by right B2 development. But I do think it's coming upon us to do, to do every last thing we can possibly do to make sure that the development that does come forward here inevitably is the most compatible with the neighborhood as possible.
And so now I would like a second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, may I call for the question?
Can I, I'm sorry, can I just get some clarification? So we're looking at around February the 1st or the 15th, those are the two meetings in February. Do you want to give me a date certain?
60 days is...
February 15th.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tower, may I have your vote, please?
All right.
Thank you. By a vote of 10 to zero, you have deferred this application until February the 15th, 2022.
Okay, well, that...
And Mr. Council, thank you very much. Again, my apology for putting you in a place of being a referee, but there's nowhere else for us to go. This is where we got to come to get that response.
This is why we get the big bucks.
Thank you very much. Hope you have a nice holiday. Happy New Year and look forward to seeing you.
Billy, it's always nice seeing you. Thank you very much. So that concludes all the items on the planning agenda. I don't believe there's any unfinished business.
Madam Vice Mayor, I do have some unfinished business with your permission. I would like to move that the council reconvene in closed session to consider appointments. I know, I realize that it's a late hour. I do not believe our work from today is finished, and I would appreciate your consideration of this motion to spend a few minutes reviewing appointments so that we can be prepared to move into 2022 in the most prepared fashion as possible.
I would second the motion.
Do we need to move...
Can you read the paragraph relating to appointments?
I can find it.
This would be after we do open mic.
Oh, I forgot. Yes, it would be.
That's enough. Yes, it has.
I don't think we can adjourn and then go back into executive session without making a notice.
I don't...
Do it beforehand.
I don't think we can adjourn.
Do you want to do it before we do open mic?
Do it before we open mic.
If you adjourn the meeting, the session's over.
Right.
But we would have to take a break.
We haven't, well, we have not, just a moment, please. We have not adjourned yet. Let's wait and hear from our attorney.
So I would suggest that you go back and convene in closed session, come back out. You're going to have to recertify that closed session, then adjourn your meeting, and then do your open mic.
Well, I don't know that I have the call for it.
I do.
I have.
I have a copy. And it will do me good to stand up and carry it over to you.
How many people do we have for open mic?
So you would entertain a motion, go into closed session for the purpose of considering...
And then what do we do about open mic?
Well, when you come back out...
So the mic's going to have to wait until we come back out?
Correct.
And we have to indulge. How many people do we have? Michael? Are they waiting? Is the mic's going to have to wait until we come back out of closed session?
We have, we do have...
How many do we know? We got to be 30 to people who came to speak.
Does everybody realize that these speakers?
Well, we got to consider.
Well, let's do this very quickly. Can we do this very, very quickly?
Yeah, we just do the one appointment, and then that way we can...
No, no, it's more complicated than that. So what this means is the open mic people cannot speak until we come back. Now, we can do this next week. If we make a commitment to all of us be concise and get it done next week. You decide.
Well, we've got to take a vote, don't we?
We decide what Mr. Bellucci...
I do, I think it's important that we, I mean, why, it's not possible to have an open mic and then recess into closed session and then recertify. It's not possible.
There is a way.
I want to be respectful to everyone who's here, and I do want to hear from all the people who are here.
There's not that many, I don't think.
You will have to reconvene, a meeting, go into closed session, and then come back out. You can't have another meeting.
We did this back in July of 1986, that's why. Get out of here. Linwood was here. No, he wasn't. Barbara was here. We did the swear in the office if I could, and we called a special meeting right after the fact.
Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk?
Ma'am? How many speakers do we have from open mic?
We have four in person and one webex.
So five. So can you please give us direction, Mr. Stiles?
I can, we can make it work whichever way you choose to do it.
Well, I think it's unfair to leave the people who are waiting.
I agree. I don't think that's right for them.
Right, well, then you would adjourn the meeting, and you will declare a special meeting after it's over as the acting mayor. And that special meeting will have a closed session and then...
And read this paragraph.
Correct.
I only have to read this one paragraph.
Correct.
Can I, can I ask one question, too? Do we need to have our VBTB folks stay to certify on camera when they come back out of the closed session?
Well, you're not required to televise your meetings anyway, but you typically do. So it's not a legal requirement, but it is your practice.
All right, well, let's get this. Okay, this meeting is adjourned. All right, is the, is the acting mayor of the Virginia Beach City Council, call a special meeting to convene into closed session to discuss personnel matters. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1, council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees.
And we will reconvene?
And to reconvene...
And we will reconvene afterwards to make the appointments.
And to certify the closed session.
And to certify the closed session. Anybody want a second? Make a motion?
So moved.
Well, we need a motion to go to closed session, right?
Right.
He just, Michael just made it.
For the purposes announced in the call for the special meeting as stated.
Bellucci and Branche.
The vote's open. Let's go.
I voted.
Do we need to vote?
Did you vote?
We're not, no, I need...
You need to vote.
Mr. Rouse, I need you to vote, please. By a vote of nine to one, you have recessed into closed session.
We reconvene from our closed session, and we need to certify the closed session?
Get it back on?
We are back on.
So moved.
Second.
Didn't want you to have to do it in service.
The only thing that we have to accomplish...
I need to take the vote first, please, for certification. Mr. Tower?
So moved.
Thank you. By a vote of nine to zero, you have certified the closed session to be in accordance with the motion to close session, motion to recess.
All right.
Mr. Jones, would you please do the honors?
Thank you. To nominate to the Planning Commission, Holly Queller and David Weiner, and to the Social Services Advisory Board, Joan Mancozo.
And we do need to say that the term for the Planning Commission are...
One year.
One year that terminates on December 31st, not 2022.
Okay.
Vote board open? It is, yes. Mr. Tower? Thank you. By a vote of nine to zero, you have appointed those read by Councilmember Jones. Meeting adjourned.
I want to thank you guys in the back back there.